Good evening and welcome to the Milton Planning Board's 20th meeting of the 2016 fiscal year. I'd like to start this evening's meeting with a moment of silence for Kate Lisa Aten. I'm Milton Hazel Senior, who died yesterday after being struck by a vehicle at the intersection of Brushhill Road and Aberdeen Street. Thank you. I'm Brian Furs. I'm Chair of the Planning Board. I'd like the other members to now introduce themselves.
Alex Whiteside, member.
Michael Kelly, member.
Liam Clark, Planning Director.
Julia Getman, clerk.
Cheryl Tagheas, member.
And Emily Ennis will be joining us in just a moment as our fifth member. Tonight we have a pretty full agenda. We have three public hearings, one at 7:15 for Kinseal Lane subdivision revision, one at 7:45 for a continued public hearing on our zoning articles for the May 16th town meeting, and a third public hearing at 8 o'clock for 2:45 Highland Street preliminary subdivision plan. We also have some old business to discuss as well as several items of new business. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast live as well as taped and will be available on the town's website for viewing. Administrative items, our next meeting dates March 24th, April 14th, and April 28th. I don't believe we have any minutes tonight, Bill. Is that correct? As far as that... Julia, do you know if we need...
There were the February 17th one out.
Alex, have you had a chance to review them yet?
I haven't had...
All right, I haven't either.
February 25th is in there too.
Those were approved last week.
I have February 11th here.
What?
The last meeting, the 17th, were passed out. This meeting, the 11th.
They were passed out at the last meeting?
Yeah.
So they're somewhere around that...
In that pile.
Pile.
You need February 11th and January 17th approved? Is that what you're saying?
I need January 17th approved, which were passed out at the last meeting. February 11th you haven't seen yet, those were passed out tonight.
Tonight, okay. So we'll have to approve them at the next meeting.
Passed out in the packet here?
I don't...
Just February 11th is in front of me.
Oh, okay. I see it.
One page.
Okay.
Okay.
Before we get into our new business, we have an opportunity at every meeting for citizen speak. Are there any citizens in the audience who would like to speak about any items that are not currently on tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing none. We'll move into new business. Excuse me, I am missing somebody. Come forward, please.
Jim Coyle, I live on Bunton Street in East Milton. And I just have a general question about the whole process here that may or may not be applicable. When zoning issues for a specific project are approved, is the... Do the traffic study that goes with those, does that include spillover into adjacent areas there that may be unintentional, unforeseen? I'll give an example. The Central Business District in East Milton, right now, the addition of additional restaurants there and other businesses, which is good in itself, but the parking, especially the valet parking, my observation, is now goes well outside of the business district completely, goes all the way to the congregational church there, and makes the traffic flow on Adams Street impaired. And if there's large vehicles going, it's no longer a true two-way road from the congregational church all the way to the business, the boundary of the business district at all, in my opinion. I drive through there often, I drove through there tonight. The cars are lined up there every night. I don't know how late they are, but traffic's, if there's a truck or something coming the other way, with all the vehicles there, and with the valet parking, which I think is a bit dangerous, the way I've seen it happening right now, there's people doing... I'm guessing it's a valet parking people, or people trying to avoid that fee, that do quick U-turns right in front of Dunkin' Donuts, try to turn around there to get the next available space. It's almost like car jockeys in a way. And I think it's... I think it needs a further look. And my point here is that whatever you do in all these other projects, which are all good, I like them all. I like more development outside of East Milton, but... Which is good for Milton as a whole, but I think that spillover effect into other, outside of the areas of intent or business districts, whatever they are, should be a mandatory consideration in any traffic studies that accompany any of these projects. That's my two cents.
Thanks. I think you had a question in there about what the traffic studies involve and what they include.
Yes.
My experience with traffic studies is that they'll include... A thorough traffic study will include essentially most impacted areas within a certain circumference around the site, and it will talk about where the spillovers are going to be. It will consider where cars may reroute to, to get around traffic. I'm not sure that it would typically consider parking necessarily, parking demand, that would typically be a separate study, but it certainly should be considering whether roadway is wide enough to accommodate the cars that are parked and then the traffic.
I've been retired construction manager on a lot of projects. I've been working Chelsea, Boston, Cambridge, and Attleboro in the last few years now, and it has been a requirement. The traffic studies have had to be well beyond the immediate bounds of any development project. So to me, it's the norm in the business. I'm just not as familiar with Milton's approach to it.
As we would do... Yeah, sorry, go ahead.
Well, we... A developer does a traffic study and gets a traffic expert and comes in and makes a projection of the traffic. And then the expert goes home, and the study gets put on a shelf somewhere, and that's the end of it, as far as that particular project is concerned. They've done their study. It's either going to be right or wrong, and it's a problem because you point out that the traffic... I mean Steel &amp; Rye has the same... Has had the same effect. The traffic study just had no idea what the effect of Steel &amp; Rye would be, and Novara apparently has the same problem. And, you know, there is no requirement that they comply with the traffic study.
The Planning Board could certainly question the traffic study and dig into it and ask for further detail as part of the public hearing. As far as whether or not they need to comply with the traffic study, there can be... They can certainly comply with the conditions of the... They have to comply with the conditions of the special permit.
Right.
I agree, the traffic studies are a... If you were in the business, you certainly know they can be a bit of an art form.
And I'll give you an example. In Chelsea, projects I've done there, the fire department can overrule the Building Inspection Services Department because public safety should trump everything. That's my concern, the current concern in East Milton that I have as a resident of that area. And I just see it, I just feel a big truck coming the other way going east towards Quincy squeezes the people going west on Adams. I don't want to hog too much time, I think...
Certainly. Well, we have a few more minutes before we get into our public hearings anyway. Cheryl, do you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask whether you've taken this up with the Traffic Commission yet?
No, I have not, no.
It might be a place to go for looking how to maybe remedy what's the situation now. I personally think that as we look at growth in the business districts, just by, like even Steel &amp; Rye and Novara, that the town is going to need to look at the traffic comprehensively. I think people have made that suggestion, like when Hendry's and Milton Hill House and Steel &amp; Rye were all being discussed, that the traffic studies not necessarily always have the projections of the potential developments. So I think it does warrant some further look down the road after projects are completed and before new ones get approved, that there be a follow-up traffic analysis.
And I think so. You know, it could be, a stipulation could be added to the special permit or the permit in general by whatever the proper mechanism is within... You know, I think that should be a requirement as of special permits.
Just as a quick follow-up, because we do need to move on, but to your point that you're making, you know, as on the development side, where I wear my professional hat. I have worked in many communities where there is a one- or three-year look, where there's a requirement that the police weigh in or somebody weigh in on whether or not the traffic is complying. It's a very difficult... It's pretty difficult to take a special permit back, but certainly there could be mechanisms by which they need to improve it or make it safer, something along those lines.
Right. You know, for example, in Attleboro, the jobs I've done there, we basically had to prove that all the projected, at least to meet the zoning requirements, it was all off-street parking, not impacting the on-street parking in any way.
It's always the devils in the details on the enforcement, certainly.
Yes, so I think... Anyway...
One minute.
For what?
I just have a comment to that. You have, without believing the point, I think what he said was, it isn't just the parking that the restaurant's generating by its valets, but it's also the people looking to defeat the payment of the fee for the valet. So although the valet may be putting the car in the right place, it's the public that's looking for that parking space that he doesn't have to pay, whatever that fee is, which is an entirely different issue than...
Enforcement matter.
Yeah. Giving back to the Traffic Commission, an issue that, does this meet the requirements of the special permit? Yes, it does. They keep all their cars on-site with their valet, but if somebody doesn't use the valet...
But if it creates a safety issue, then Traffic Commission needs to take it out.
They should look at it, but I'm not sure.
But to your initial point, I don't think the traffic study could have assessed the valet, for starters. It definitely doesn't assess people that make illegal maneuvers, and when you do a traffic study and you're the developer, like Brian said, it's a bit of an art, and there's a variable there, and the guy who's getting you paid, is paying you, is probably going to get the benefit of the doubt in the traffic study.
But if Milton had a traffic stutter independent of all of them that enhances the requirements that are in the current ordinances, I think that would be a benefit.
Yeah, we do third-party review for stormwater, so that is something we should probably look at, is third-party for traffic review.
It should always be, it's just...
I agree.
You know, and in this case here, where the traffic, the, let's say, the people that want a free space, or can't get a space in the valet parking, it's just overloaded because of other people and other businesses there, there's probably 15, 20 cars outside of the physical business district right now, every night. So, anyway.
Thank you. We do need to move on, but I appreciate it, it was a good dialogue. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
All right, we're going to now jump to our first public hearing at 7:15, which is the Kinseal Lane subdivision revision, which has been continued from February 25th. We have coming forward before us.
Mr. Chairman...
Point of order?
Yes, I'm going to recuse myself.
Okay.
My company does business with Dennis Cohane's company, not on this project and not in Milton, but for the sake of conflict of interest, any question of it, I will refuse myself and go across the hall.
Okay, we'll come get you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ned Corcoran, attorney here on behalf of Dennis Cohane, and I am joined by Dennis at the table. Dennis is the owner of the lot at 1035 Brushhill Road, and he was the proponent for the original subdivision and the creation of Kinseal Lane. Property was divided, a four-plus-or-minus acre lot into two lots, one containing slightly more than an acre, and the other balanced. Dennis and his wife Mary live in the larger of the two remaining lots. It was before you, in November, with a description of specific changes and amendments that we were proposing to the subdivision. As constructed, Kinseal Lane, a couple of issues. One is that the house that was built at Kinseal Lane was built almost exactly on the setback line, creating a potential issue of setbacks. So we're proposing to move the area of the right-of-way by six inches, moving it towards the south. So instead of a one-foot strip between the right-of-way and the property that's identified as now or formerly Michael Burke, would now be six inches. And the purpose of that is to prevent access. It's not frontage on another, on the southerly lot, and it prevents access. The plan was also needed to be adjusted to show the proper location of a 10-foot sewer easement, which comes in from a property of Leonard Salata to the north, coming off of Blue Hill Drive. It was improperly located on the prior plan. It needs... The plan corrects the location. It's a sewer that comes in and provides sewer service directly to the new dwelling at One Kinseal Lane. As I said, the right-of-way needs to be moved by one, by six inches. Also, the lot, Lot 1 was improperly described from a lot area perspective originally. It was shown as 40,000 square feet on the northerly side of Kinseal Lane. The lot area is actually 49,000 square feet. It includes Kinseal Lane as it... The fee in Kinseal Lane, as it runs from Walcott Road westerly to Lot 2. And then the area that is excluding Kinseal Lane is noted as 40,302 square feet, so that there would be a legal conforming lot on the fronting on Kinseal Lane. The original plan showed the driveway that would serve One Kinseal Lane, the new dwelling, as being further to the west. The driveway has actually been located to the easterly side. It's some 37 feet in from Walcott Road. Originally, it was planned to go beyond the... Beyond the sort of the extent of the One Kinseal Lane dwelling, it's now been moved back. And we are requesting a waiver, an additional waiver, to allow the portion of Kinseal Lane beyond the driveway into the dwelling at One Kinseal to be... The riding portion to be a gravel surface rather than a bituminous concrete surface. So there were originally five waivers granted from the rules and regulations of the Planning Board with respect to the subdivision. We're asking for a sixth, which is to change in the riding surface. The purpose of that is really recognizes the uniqueness of these two lots. This is a simple two-lot subdivision. It is intended that the... That Kinseal Lane be treated as a sort of a country lane, as opposed to a roadway that's serving multiple lots. There is secondary access, actually Dennis says primary access via an easement by private way off of Brushhill Road coming in from the south of the property. As if you note at the bottom of the plan, it says easement to Brushhill Road. There's a 51-foot, feet worth of frontage on that private lane, certainly not enough for its separate frontage, which is why Kinseal Lane wraps around the corner and extends down a significant length of the Lot 2. But it is intended to be a country lane, and I would suggest that in the Purpose and Authority Section 1 of the Rules and Regulations of the Planning Board, which cite to Chapter 41, Section 81- M, which is the general laws addressing subdivision of land, it says in the second sentence that the powers of the Planning Board shall be exercised with due regard for the provision of adequate access to all lots in a subdivision by ways that will be safe and convenient for travel, for lessening congestion in such ways, and in the adjacent public ways, and for reducing danger to life and limit the operation of motor vehicles. And I think in this case, the gravel drive meets that standard. Also, and of significance, the revised plans don't show the topography, but the original subdivision plan did. And there is a 12-foot change in elevation from Walcott Road to the rear of Lot 1, going down towards Lot 2. And by changing out a bituminous gray surface to a gravel surface, we increase the amount of pervious surface and have less likelihood of stormwater draining towards Lot 2. It'll capture more, sort of an impervious and a drain-through condition, as opposed to stormwater shooting down towards the Cohane dwelling, which is on Lot 2. So for those reasons, and in particular because when I presented in November, I presented these details to the board, and I think the board was comfortable, had no comments at the time, we went ahead, prepared final mylar sheets for presentation to the board, and I think at this point, suggests it'd be a bit of a hardship now to undo that work. I would ask the board to consider granting that final waiver and approve the amendment to subdivision as proposed. Happy to take questions and comments.
Anybody on the board wish to speak?
I want to speak.
Okay. Mr. Whiteside?
When we did the original subdivision, we... The problem was that the existing house, its frontage was on Walcott Road, and the owner wanted to use that frontage on Walcott Road, or the owner wanted to put in another house. And there was only enough frontage for one house. And the only way you solve that problem is creating a subdivision street. And the subdivision street was created, giving the existing house frontage and giving the new house frontage. And the subdivision street was supposed to be constructed before the new house was built, and I don't understand, Bill, how the new house got built before the street got constructed. Because we're now in a position where the new house is in, and the owner says, "I don't need a subdivision street." And the owner of the existing house said, "I use a right-of-way somewhere else to get to my property, and I don't need the subdivision street." And basically, why don't you just waive the requirement of a subdivision street? That's in effect what they're saying, because a gravel drive is not crushed stone, it is just dirt. And it's... The intention is to let it grow out and just forget about it. We, in Milton, back in '58, required frontage on a street. That's the essence, the essence of our zoning. Frontage on a street. Every lot has to have frontage on a street. If you don't have frontage on a street, you don't have a buildable lot. In this case, we did the minimum street that we... We discussed what the minimum street should be, and it was a paved street of 14 feet? Why was the original...
14 feet.
14 feet. I mean, that... Before, 18 feet was our minimum. We bent over backwards to make this street as minimal as possible while still respecting our zoning. And if we now determine that a subdivision street can in effect be an unbilled street, then we are going to have a lot of problems. I mean, consider Lot 9, that Pleasant Street subdivision. Dirt, right-of-way, so-called. Get an easement over another lot to get in, and you say, "We don't need to build this subdivision street," but it's still supposed to give us our frontage. That sort of thing is going to happen all the time, I predict. The next thing is that frontage... The definition is, "Frontage of a lot is the distance measured in a straight line between the points where the side boundary lines of the lot intersect the sideline of the street, which provides access to the lot." The street is supposed to provide access to the lot. The fact is that in a number of cases, owners use common driveways and do not access through the street, but legally, they're supposed to at least have the right of access through the street. So the street has to provide access to the lot, and, you know, if you don't have a street, you just don't have frontage. You don't have frontage. We... The other thing is, of course, assume that we say a subdivision street can be unpaved, for whatever reason. You can have an unpaved subdivision street. Does that not carry over to private ways and their adequacy to serve new houses? I mean, in the past, we have looked carefully at private ways and where they have inadequate construction and unsuitable grades. We'd simply say, "This is not adequate. You've got to improve the street," and the way you improve a street is through the subdivision control law. So if you say a subdivision street doesn't have to be paved, doesn't have to have any grades, doesn't have to have any construction, you're going to be hard-pressed when someone comes in and says, "Got the same thing here, dirt road, really nice, a little tough in the winter." It's just, this is the slipriest of slippery soaps, and we really can't, we cannot waive the paved road. It's essential for frontage.
So I have a question. That's okay. So I remember requiring the street be paved. I remember the issues about frontage. And so I'm, A, concerned, as you are, that we required that a street be built prior to construction. It was not built. I'm also concerned that if we required the street to be built to grant frontage to two lots, one... We had one lot, had frontage on one street. We've now required and ordered there to be a second lot, as you say, that a second street be built to allow frontage to both lots. If we somehow now do not require this street to be built, we are left with two lots, one of which does not have frontage, and therefore is not a legal buildable lot. So I am in agreement with what you're saying. I'm a little puzzled as to the order of events here and how the street was built, or not built, but the building was. built, but the building was.
Exactly.
So...
But I mean, moving the street six inches seems fine.
I have no problem with moving a street six inches. I have no problem with the minimum width for two buildings that we originally agreed to. I do have a concern about somehow, suddenly, if we reverse the street, we have a non-conforming lot.
May I?
Or illegal lot, yes.
Can you respond to that? We're not... This isn't a dirt road. This is a road with a full subgrade.
Okay, maybe...
If you look at... I'm sorry, if you go to the final sheet, which is the construction detail, it still has the gravel base. It's got the natural subgrade. It's got the gravel base. It's got the pitch. The only thing it doesn't have is two inches of bituminous concrete. And instead, it would be replaced with the gravel riding surface. It still has everything else. It's not just a dirt road, in the traditional sense of a dirt road. It still has a street. It is built, with the exception of the top surface, is built to the same standards as a street. We're not waiving or requesting any waivers from the subsurface. It is a street. It will provide frontage, and it is simply a street that would not have a final riding surface. There are a number of older private ways, parts of older subdivisions that were done before subdivision control law came in, where there are roadways that are gravel, that are not...
The key is that they are pre-subdivision control law.
I understand that. I can't point to another example in the town where the planning board has said, "Yes, you may have a subdivision," but I think it's important in this case that it is two lots, not a larger subdivision, that it recognizes sort of the uniqueness of the area, that sort of northwesterly corner of town with larger estates that share private ways. The private ways provide access and some degree of historic frontage. But, you know, this is one of those larger lots that's simply being requested to be... That was requested and approved to be cut into two, not into, you know, six or seven or eight lots. This is two lots, a new street that's providing frontage to both. It is... Yes, there were other waivers that were granted and approved. This simply recognizes that sort of rural nature of these two lots within a rural area. And I think in that case, because of its uniqueness, that it is appropriate for the board to think about granting this.
Emily?
So, a couple of things. One, with all due respect, as the remaining lots in Milton get divided up and built out, almost everybody can point to some unique aspect of that. So saying this is more unique than the others is perhaps not necessarily the best way of looking for a waiver. I mean, everything that we have been having as these build-out, they all have their unique considerations. That can't be the only thing. Second is, I am concerned about two things, both of which have come before the board and other requests like this. One is the ability for fire access. Is this gravel road going to be sufficiently built so that the fire truck, if it needed to, could traverse the full width? And that's been something that various members of the board, over the years, have brought up for other subdivisions. And the other thing is the maintenance. Will this be maintained as a road? So will, you know, as the gravel deteriorates over time, all road surfaces deteriorate over time, will it be replenished and replaced and maintained as any road should be maintained?
My understanding that it would be.
Yes.
I just point out that we remember the one-lot subdivision up on Hillside Street.
Yes, we do.
One lot, paved street. I mean, that was a big fight. And it was, in the end, once again, we leaned over backwards to give the minimal amount of street, which would still suffice for safety and make a credible showing under the subdivision control law. If you look at, I mean, our standards of construction, preparation of the roadway, it's in the rules and regulations, it goes on at length about how these roads have to be constructed. And gravel is not crushed stone. Gravel is basically dirt. And to say you've got a gravel road is the same thing as saying you've got a dirt road. That's what it is. I... You know, I understand that they don't want to use it, but I don't think that's good enough. I mean, they got an extra house by agreeing to build this road. They should have built the road before they built the house. The road should have been in now, and so we wouldn't be having this discussion. Somehow, the house got put in without the road being built. I don't think... I don't think that... I think that this would be a precedent that we would live to regret very quickly. You might not, Emily.
I still have a responsibility between now and the end of April, so...
Mike, do you have anything?
Well, one thing I'm looking at, it's not even a fourteen-foot gravel road, because it says twelve to fourteen feet. So it just, it seems to be going in the opposite direction at every turn.
I think that is consistent with the original subdivision approval, which the width of the roadway on Lot Two was approved, I think, was approved at twelve feet. The width of the roadway as it crosses Lot One is at fourteen feet. And so I think that's why it's showing as a construction detail, twelve to fourteen feet. But the plans show fourteen-foot-wide bituminous concrete on the original subdivision plan across Lot One. I think it narrows to twelve-foot as it gets to Lot Two.
Is the concern... I'm sorry, I should have asked.
Alex first, then Emily.
Yep.
Well, I was going to say that it seems to me that if the... All they want to do is move the road six inches, we could do that as a non-material change to the original subdivision plan. What was the other?
The sizes of each lot, the amendment to the sizes of each lot. The ten-inch utility sewer easement needs to be redrawn on the plan.
Ten foot?
Sorry, ten foot, yeah. And then the moving the right-of-way for Kinsale Lane and the driveway.
They show it as forty thousand square feet this side of... So it's bigger.
Forty-three... Yeah, forty-three.
Three hundred and two feet bigger than... So that's a non-material change.
Yep. It becomes bigger because when you move the length of that...
But it's not getting smaller.
Right.
Right.
And then...
Well, I mean, you had forty thousand feet to start with. Now you've got forty thousand three hundred and two feet.
Right. And the driveway, yeah, sorry.
I have a question for the... Or consideration, just a thought, I guess, something to just think about and discuss. So this roadway is not certainly being used. We've talked about that and why that's precedence that we need to be very careful about. I wonder if, with the stormwater items that have been coming up lately, if there's any worthy discussion here of requiring some sort of permeable surface, whether it's the pavers they used at Milton, at Curry, behind the dorms, and then the waiver being conditional that this roadway not be used other than emergency access. In the event that it ever became required, the roadway would have to be built. That becomes an enforcement mechanism, obviously. So I just put those two thoughts out there for consideration and discussion.
Sorry, that actually goes to...
You'll go first.
That actually goes to the question I was going to ask, which is, is this primarily an aesthetic issue? Is it the asphalt or the bituminous concrete is an aesthetic issue for the two houses? Because if so, then putting in some sort of permeable paver that's a little bit more finished than gravel might be an acceptable compromise. And I don't have an issue with that, especially if it's something that helps with the stormwater. Because as you say, we have had a lot of stormwater problems recently. But... And back to Alex's point on the one-lot subdivision that we had, where we still required a fully constructed street for that one lot. I mean, that's a precedent right there. This is two lots. So, you know, again, a little concerned. But if it's an issue of creating permeable pavers, I don't have a problem with that at all. It's a possibility some of those are, you know, very hardy, could be a better look.
Well, the ones they used at...
And would address the...
The ones they used at Curry are actually designed to actually grow into grass. You can't tell they're there. You have to know they're there, as the fire department theoretically would. But again, it's a... I am well aware of the slippery slopes. Do you want to address my comments?
Well, the other thing is that a street, as I'd say, is supposed to provide access to the lot. So access is access. And, you know, it may be that the owner does something without our approval, but we... Because we're not going to be looking to... Bill goes around, drives around, looks for things like this, but sometimes he misses.
I'm not sure I want to set that up as a possibility either. I think what our... What we require is what we require. I don't have an issue... So on this memorandum, I don't have an issue with the first four items. It sounds to me like the sticking...
What are they?
The amendment to the sizes of the lot, the relocation of the ten-foot utility sewer easement, moving the right-of-way by six inches, and the relocation of the driveway from Kinsale Lane to the new dwelling at the Walcott roadside of property. I don't have any issues with those. It sounds to me like the sticking issue is the gravel.
It seems kind of tough to get around. I mean, it says a very general precedent in my mind, and that is, come in and get a permit, and then don't do it, and plead after that.
Before we make any motions, can I... Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to this issue from the public? Okay, so...
If I can just answer a new question that was being raised back and forth, with respect to the use. There's actually an agreement, homeowner's agreement between the parties. The lane is only to be used for emergency and very periodic truck deliveries, and for pedestrian access so that the Cohanes can go to Mass at the church, and they can walk to and from without driving out and around. And that's how they've set up the agreement between the parties. I understand the board's concern about consistency. I think that, and, you know, I don't make the argument for uniqueness lightly, because I think every case needs to be evaluated on its specific nature. And no case, unless the facts are substantially the same, no case ought to be precedent the next time. So...
Why wasn't the street constructed before that house was built?
It was put in with the gravel riding surface. I don't...
I'm sorry. Are you saying that it's fully constructed to the gravel surface now, just missing that final layer?
Missing the final layer.
And the binder.
Missing the... It's missing the bituminous layer from the point of the driveway. Bituminous, it's fully built with bituminous into the driveway.
I haven't had any pictures here. That would have been a nice option.
I... I'm sorry. As a result of the last time we were here, and this issue did not get raised, I did not anticipate... I understood that there was a concern, but, you know, modified the plans in accordance where I thought the planning board was willing to be a couple of months ago.
I just don't remember this discussion.
I don't actually either. I'm puzzling.
Didn't register at all on May.
Yeah, I mean, I remember the issue of the sewer easement being moved. I remember the issue of the driveway being moved six inches. And you may well have sat it, but I honestly don't remember the construction. And, you know, my fault for not remembering it, but I just don't. So I remember the rest.
Plans that I submitted with the memo on October thirty, I highlighted each...
Yeah, I see the date. I just don't remember the discussion yet. I'm sorry.
And each of the plans I highlighted in yellow, and I walked specifically through each point in the meeting. Now, the board had other things going on. Every night, it's got other things going on. I can understand...
Yeah, for each.
Specific recollections of things. But I made a point of highlighting every change that we were requesting on the set of plans that we submitted with that memo last fall.
Yeah. As I said, I'm not saying that you can...
I can't imagine that I would have ever agreed to a unpaved street. I just don't think that that is possible.
Why don't you want to pave the street? Because it's a country lane, and it is meant to serve as a country lane without regular vehicular access. Then why didn't you bring that forward originally? I don't know why it wasn't brought forward originally.
Well, if I can... Mike, it's... The main issue for me is the drainage. It's a twelve-foot drop from Walcott down to my house. And when we were building that road, we compacted everything, and we were ready to pave it. And then we had a huge storm, and my house got flooded. And so we dug it out again. We put in gravel, and that cured the problem. And, you know, we put in a fire hydrant where the two lots meet. I've had the fire department out there. I've had the police out there. They've all driven down there. It's a gravel road. It's a country road. It's... And to be... That's the main reason for putting in the gravel road. Like, I can't have water flowing into my backyard and subsequently into my basement. So once we put in the gravel road, it was cured. I had... Now, I knew what I was supposed to put in, but, you know, everything looks good on plans when you apply for stuff. But when you actually get into the construction of it, sometimes it changes. And in this instance, it changes. It changed for me because, number one, I live there. Actually, that's the main reason that I put it in, because I live there. If I built these two houses to sell, I'm sure it might have been different. I could have put in the road and walked away. Because I live there, I don't want water flowing into my backyard, especially into my basement. And the gravel cured it. And if I put in anything but gravel, I think it's going to happen because of the twelve-foot drop. So, I mean, I've built enough... I've built enough for the last twenty-five years to know what I'm supposed to put in. But I do know that things change as you build. And in this instant, that's the reason we put it in. And that's why I'm asking for a waiver. I'm asking for, you know, if I put a street in my backyard, it's going to create flooding again. So that's why I'm asking for a waiver for the material that we've put in. And I don't know much about zoning in Milton, to be quite truthful, but if we could make it a paper street, it's not a primary access to my lot. I do have my own entrance to this site. It just doesn't make sense for me to pave it and create a problem when we've already solved it. So I would ask the board if just grant this one waiver. It's... I don't think it's going to be detrimental to the future of any zoning in Milton. I mean, a lot of the zoning is already done site-specific, so why can't we make this one site-specific?
It's not zoning, it's subdivision.
No, I understand that.
It's state law, not local law.
Right, but I'm... Okay, so...
It's a general law.
Exactly.
Right.
It's a general law.
This is not our... It's not Milton zoning that's governing it.
This is not site-specific.
Yes, exactly.
Well, okay, so to the...
The general law doesn't say, "Thou shalt build with bituminous concrete." It says, "Thou shalt build roads that are safe and convenient for the purpose."
And I think at least...
The purpose of providing access to a lot.
Correct. And it provides access to a lot, and it's safe, and it's convenient, and it works, and it can withstand emergency vehicle access. Just doesn't... It's just being proposed that it not have a bituminous concrete.
What about the Curry pavers? And also, I would... It seems to me if you're saying that the... And, and also I would, it, it seems to me if you're saying that this is necessitated by drainage, we need, we need an engineer in here to say that there's no way this can be cured except by leaving the road unpaved.
There's always means to cure it.
What?
There's always means to cure it.
But that certainly resolves
You didn't have a
That helps with the precedent problem if we have an engineer giving a hardship clause.
Well, if the engineer says, I mean, we can't do it. Of course they can do it. And I, I mean, the curry pavers seem to be a, a perfectly reasonable way of, uh, of dealing with this. And to say, I, you know, I just don't believe that if you have curry pavers, you're necessarily going to have a big drainage problem.
Could I interrupt just for a moment?
Of course.
Point of order. Can I have a motion to continue this for one minute so we can open the 7:45 and continue it?
Yeah, absolutely. I would move that we can continue this discussion for one minute for the purposes of opening another public hearing and continuing that.
Second?
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I open, I'd like to open the 7:45 Planning Board Public Hearing on the zoning bylaw discussion, which has been continued from the February 25th meeting. I am going to acknowledge that we are not bringing back member Taguayus with the expectation that we're going to be continuing this to the conclusion of the, probably 7:50 meeting.
Yep.
So moved?
So moved.
Have a second?
Yeah, let's just move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, I'd like to reopen the, uh, Kinsale Lane subdivision modification discussion.
So, I mean, I don't want to hold up items one through four. I'd like to find out if there is some sort of compromise that we can do on this. The drainage is a reasonable issue from the perspective of the homeowner. I have no problem with trying to figure out how to do that so that they don't get flooded. But I also, you know, we have responsibilities under the Subdivision Control Act to make sure that we fol- properly follow that and that, you know, we are consistent with our requirements as a planning board. So, how do we get there?
I'm just sincerely curious. What do you do when somebody comes in and they said, well, we don't want to put a paved road in. We'll put a gravel road in. And that way I won't have to put a big, uh, you know, system in to, uh, maintain the drainage.
Well, if, if, if there's not a requirement that it be a paved bituminous concrete street, but there is a requirement that it be, have safe access, I think that we need to be satisfied that what is be, being presented to us meets that safe access. So, who does it have to have access for? Obviously the homeowners, who are going to, to ride on it. Obviously, public safety. This isn't, this isn't a through street for the public, but they did mention the fact that trucks are going to be going on this road. Potentially, you know, delivery trucks, construction trucks, whatever. They did say not on a regular basis, but still it has to be safe enough for that. So, how do we get satisfied as a board that the construction of this road is safe for all of those parties?
Mr. Wilson?
The regulations actually do require a paved road.
Our, our subdivision, okay.
Regulations.
All right.
And they require a lot of other things for which waivers can be granted. And we're simply asking for
I understand that.
See, what I'm getting at, the, at the women's club, they put in multiple retention basins.
Yes, they did.
Well, maybe they could have come in and said, well, we'll just put a dirt road in. That way we won't need these retention basins. I mean, I, I would have thought, you didn't have an engineer look at the drainage when you first came with this plan?
No.
What did these consultant engineers that are on here do for you? Just lay out the buildings? That's it?
Yep.
I mean, with a 12-foot drop, I mean, a 12-foot drop at what, 180 feet? Or, I'm sorry, 280 feet? I mean, you certainly could have expected that you were going to get some runoff from the road. I wouldn't have expected.
Well, well, to be fair, nobody lived in the house for, you know, for 10 years.
The house and lot too.
Yes, the house that I presently live in. And the lot, one was just a, a, a big tree lot, you know, so we didn't know any about drainage.
I mean, just, just developing a lot, one is going to cause you runoff in itself. You've, you've eliminated a lot of pervious area just by building the houses, driveways.
Correct. But the only issue we have is where the driveway is. That's where the water was coming down.
Well, in fact, I'm saying, no, that isn't the only issue. You have, you've created a lot of impervious area beyond the roadway. And that, and if it's running downhill towards you, that's going to cause you runoff, apparently. So the road, the roadway isn't the only
Yeah, but the
Source of runoff that now comes down to lot two.
Yes, but the, the, um, most of the other lot is, is just lawn. You know, the roadway is hard. So that's where the water is running down.
Need a motion?
So I would, I would move that the board approve items one through four on this memo dated October 30th, 2015. So I'm, I'm comfortable moving that. And I, I would stop there for the moment. I don't, I don't want to close the public hearing because I think we might want to keep it open in order to talk about the rest, but I'd be happy to move that.
I think that if we're doing a new subdivision, we've got to, you know, if we're just amending the old subdivision, we have a road.
Yes.
If we're doing the new subdivision, we have to do the road. And the road has to be shown on the plan. And if we're going to require a paved road, they're going to have to revise their plan.
Yep.
Whereas the four things you say, I, I would suggest we deny the plan,
Denied the revision.
Deny the application.
Okay.
And agree that the prior subdivision of these four items are non-material, uh, uh, changes and approve them.
I'm going to let the applicant respond.
May I request that we continue the hearing
That'll be fine.
Till the April meeting to, if we can evaluate the questions and considerations that have been raised by the board.
I'd be comfortable with that, yeah, absolutely. I don't have an issue with that.
What are our timelines? Do we think there's been a preliminary plan here? That there has been a, another plan. There has been a, is it 90 days or 135 days that we're working on? And when did the application get filed?
January 25.
January 25. Say it's 90 days, Feb. 25. That would be April 20th, about?
April 20th, roughly, yeah.
So we can, uh,
Continue to the first April meeting.
Continue, aye?
Yep.
First meeting in April.
So April 14th, is that the meeting?
7:25.
Motion?
7:15, yeah. So moved for 7:15.
Okay, second? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
See ya, 7:15 on the 14th.
Yes.
You want to do, just suggest that the board do the same thing it did with the 7:45 hearing for the 8 o'clock hearing?
Yes, we'll do that at the beginning. Thank you. That's, that's helpful. Thank you, Ms. Corbin. Thank you. So before we reopen seven, the 7:45 hearing, can I get a motion to continue the 8:15 public hearing to the end of the 7:45 public hearing, please?
I would move that
8 o'clock.
Open the 8 o'clock public hearing at the end of the, our discussion on the public hearing. That begins at 7:45.
Can I get a second?
Second.
I knew I could count on you, Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. So we're now going to move into our, we're going to open back up our 7:45 public hearing, which is a continued public hearing from February 25th on zoning bylaws. We have three, excuse me, two, uh, items to discuss. I'm actually going to begin with a, some, a quick, couple of quick housekeeping items on these. So please bear with me as I do that. Um, so as far, we're going to start with the non-conforming zoning bylaw, if that's all right with everyone. So just quickly, there were some, there were some discussions at the last meeting regarding notice with regard to notifying the property owners of the properties affected by, um, the, potentially affected by this proposed bylaw as modified. There was also discussions about notifying property owners as originally proposed. Between that meeting and tonight, a letter was sent out to the property owners that, that were, that whose properties are affected by the bylaw as modified, as proposed modified, with this modifications. And, uh, that decision was made by me. The letter was sent out for comments to the board. Uh, we did receive some comments and those were reflected in the letter. Uh, but I, I then subsequently, after the letter had already been sent, received a comment that we probably should have discussed it at tonight's meeting. So for that, I apologize if I sent out the letter, uh, in advance of, of having a discussion here. And, um, you know, if, if we feel that we need to send a letter to more affected property owners or we want to send a follow-up letter, correcting anything, certainly we should have that discussion. Uh, secondly, there has been a discussion, uh, or some comments by the board to, um, the planning staff about whether we should notice direct abutters, whether we should notify legal abutters, uh, or if we should notify people beyond that. So we didn't do anything prior to tonight's meeting, but we need to have that discussion as well as a board to decide if we're going to make any further notices. Uh, and then I'd like to have a quick discussion about, um, the process going forward on this bylaw in particular. Uh, we've had a fair amount of discussion on this bylaw over the last couple of meetings. We've also had a couple of informational sessions that, or one informational session, excuse me, that focused on this. And by my reading, or my, my perception, it, it seems to me that, uh, we, we know where we're heading at this point with regard to the originally proposed bylaw. Uh, it also seems that there is a fair amount of concern with some of the specifics of the bylaws modif- as proposed modified, as I'm, as I'm calling it. And so I guess I want to understand where we want to go with this. We're effectively right now in a public hearing for our recommendations to the warrant committee. So there's certainly a possibility that we could make a decision about how we want to, uh, go back to the warrant committee tonight. And assuming that we're going back to the warrant committee as it seems like we are, uh, with the direction of our conversations, that we will probably be sending it back for further study. Uh, if that was the case, we could probably make that, um, decision fairly quickly tonight. And then continue our conversations on this bylaw as part of a new public meeting so that the board could have discussion, really figure out what the board wants to do, and then re-engage the public through that process. The public obviously would be able to still participate in our public meetings in the audience. They'd be able to participate through citizen speak, and we would probably continue to have informational sessions, uh, as well as submitting comments to the planning staff. So, I just wanted to sort of bring all of these ideas forward and, uh, get the board's, uh, perspective as to where we should go at this point with the non-conforming before we spend too much time on it this evening. Ms. Cheryl?
Just, if you wouldn't, would not mind asking the people who are here, how many of them came tonight with the intention to speak at a public hearing, just so we can get a sense of that? And then, um, the other thing is, via email, there was a question about how the formula works, how the calculations are arrived at. So I did a explanation of that, which I think might be useful for the board, whether that's tonight. And if there's people in the audience who are here to understand the article, the way it's written, it's not, it's just an explanation of how that works.
Okay.
So we could, we could show that and go through that as well.
Okay. Anyone else?
Uh, actually, if you ask the question to the public first of how many were here to speak, I think that'd be good. And then, yeah, I probably have a couple.
Okay, so, uh, could I ask, who is here to speak specifically about the non-conforming bylaw this evening? Okay, one, two, three, okay? And I don't see any reason why we can't hear the public regardless, since they made the effort to come out tonight.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Get their comments on record, make sure that we're, we're, you know, that will be part of any further comment, discussions we can have.
I would, yeah, I would say let's have their comment. And then, uh, once
Go from there?
The comments will go from there.
All right, that sounds great.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable, yeah.
So first hand, I saw, uh, Mr. Collins, would I step forward?
For those who don't know me in the back of the room, my name's Webster Collins. I'm a real estate appraiser and I'm an expert in land use. What I'd like to do is, I brought with me a textbook, a basic textbook called Real Estate Handbook. And it has definitions in it that are quite interesting. It has a definition of conforming and the impacts of conforming, um, use on property. And it has a definition of another word that's in the first one I'm going to read about homogeneity of uses in property. And so I think I'd like to start by, uh, reading into, uh, the record, uh, the definition of, uh, the issue of conforming.
Before you do that, just quickly, for the record, would you mind telling us the name of the book as, as far as with the sources?
It's the sixth edition of, it's published by Barron's. It's called The Real Estate Handbook.
Great, thank you.
The definition of conforming, it's, it's called, uh, "An appraisal principle that holds that property tends to reach maximum value when the neighborhood is reasonably homogeneous, homogeneous, excuse me, in social and economic activity." And then going to homogeneous, the issue there. Uniform of like characteristics or quality. The values of an area tend to be maximized when properties are homogeneous because unusual properties are likely to reduce the value of other nearby properties. And those two definitions are right on point, which we're talking about here. The issue of a non-conforming bylaw within a, uh, residential neighborhood, and I'm not talking about close urban neighborhoods, but the typical character of Milton with its residential neighborhoods just doesn't fit. Basically, the reason I say that is I have witnessed before zoning boards of appeal, courts of law, and the impacts of non-conforming uses within neighborhoods. It's astounding. Your direct abutting properties, when you put in a different use, have losses in property value of somewhere between, according to my database, 15 to 22 percent. If you're not a direct abutter, it goes down to around 10. And if you're in a neighborhood itself, it'll have an overall impact on the neighborhood of about 5 percent. The, um, issue is even deeper than that. Because I've done studies as to when these non-conforming uses are put into neighborhoods, what the impacts are long-term, not just short-term. And the most astonishing impact in the one study that I've completed shows a decline in population. People move away. They don't want to have their houses near conflicting, non-conforming uses. So what you're hearing me say is, basically, fundamentally, from a land use perspective, a non-conforming bylaw really shouldn't fit within the town, in my opinion.
You go first. No, your hand up. Your hand was up first.
Cheryl?
Mr. Collins, um, the data that you're referring to, is it related to an existing residential area where a non-conforming use comes in later? Where, in this case, where we have non-conforming uses, where perhaps residential and non-conforming existed at the time zoning was adopted? And so the, the fact that the, they were either developed at the same time or the non-conforming use was there before.
No, these are new con- non-conforming uses or expansion of non-conforming uses that took place.
Thank you. That was more or less related to mine. I wanted to know if it was a new one coming in versus one that was existing. Okay, thank you. The expansion was important. I appreciate it.
So, yeah, that was an expansion, right? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, there were two others. Mr. Erwin, did you want to speak?
Xerox those pages and send them to, uh, Tim Zawinski.
Yeah, for distribution.
Just Xerox the pages that you
And send them to
If you can do that without violating the copyright.
I think I can do that.
Thank you.
I'll email them to you, Alex, and you can then send an email to her.
He can get in trouble.
Hi, everyone. I'm Gene Erwin, town meeting member, precinct nine. I wholeheartedly agree with Web Collins, and I think, um, anyone who does commercial real estate for a living knows the same. There were the arguments. We had, uh, group discussions all last There were the arguments, we had group discussions all last summer with the conduit advisory committee, and we had a number of people with a lot of knowledge and field experience. These things came up, and they were shot down in the summer meetings. And I don't know why, it keeps coming back over and over again, but I think Mr. Collins has hopefully put it to rest. It speaks for itself, what he said, and it's, you can all look it up. And I think we should take his advice. He is, you know, a world-renowned expert, and as far as world-renowned experts go, I know you also have another issue coming up with Dr. Burke on his development of Milton. I just want to say for the expiate time, the people in my neighborhood support him wholeheartedly. Thank you.
Question?
Let's do the last one first, and then we'll respond. Okay.
When you say the people in your neighborhood, is there a neighborhood association that has membership that's taken a vote?
No, it's just, I was out getting signatures recently for a candidate, and I knocked on probably 60 doors. And virtually all the people who I spoke to and came up in discussion were in favor.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
My name is John McMahon. I'm an abutter in one of those non-conforming use properties. I spoke to you a while back. First of all, I read your presentation, I saw your presentation up there, and I saw how you redeveloped and how you looked at the different potential developments on the site which I own and which my neighbor owns. And one of the things that you should be aware of is that I own beside 96 Houston Avenue, which is Tateski's, okay, on Houston Avenue. One of the things that you should be aware of is that Tateski got planning permission in 1934. And part of that planning permission, they have a right-of-way in there. That right-of-way was created from the road coming in from Dryer Avenue. The town bought the road at 54 feet into Dryer Avenue. It bought the road coming into Thatcher Street at 50 feet. There was a difference of four feet, and we're going back to 1934 and I think. So the Tateskis, or the previous owner there, they took possession of that area of the road. And the road ended up in the land courts, where they developed the four sites in front of Houston Avenue. Number 88 Dryer Avenue, which is on Dryer Avenue, and Houston Avenue, number 94 Houston Avenue, and 96 Houston Avenue, and 98 Houston Avenue were already there, were already pre-existing. But there was a right-of-way running along the back of Dryer Avenue. And that right-of-way, when they developed these sites, that right-of-way was created between 94 and 96 Houston Avenue, and still exists. And that right-of-way is court-ordered. So, but I didn't see it on your plans. And it represents 11 feet wide, or 10 feet wide, by 35 feet as far as the corridor is concerned, but I still have the right-of-way going through it. And I still have access. And Tateski has access. And Tateski got planning permission, as I said, in 1934 on it. And that was not, there are total figures of 3,000 to 300 square feet of real estate that you, if what you're saying is, if you include their offloading and unloading, which is part of that right-of-way, that right-of-way adds, it puts another 2,000 onto the lot. And that would make that lot a lot much bigger than what you projected as 9,000 square feet. Also, that right-of-way is owned by, it's a private way, it's owned by three individuals. It's owned by 96 Houston Avenue, which is their backyard. It's owned by Tateskis, who have the right over it. And I have access to that right-of-way, too. And that's a commercial parking lot, or a commercial offloading area. And the figures that you project on that area as 3,200 square feet, if they add the right-of-way onto that for Tateskis, you're looking at 5,000 square feet, 5,300 square feet. Or if you add the right-of-way onto 96 Houston Avenue, you're adding their potential development. And if you add it onto mine, you're adding mine as well. So you're looking at far bigger commercial activity down there than you think you are. And so I'm not, don't get me wrong, I'm in favor of seeing some major development down there, simply because I'm dealing with it every day of the week. But I want to see a development that comes in that's reasonable and fair for everybody and doesn't affect me to that extent. And I think this bylaw would go some ways to helping offloading certain problems, but the reality of the situation is, you've got to take into consideration the abutters. And you've got to allow the abutters redevelop beside one another, so as, within reason, I'm not looking for major, major things way out of control, within reason, so as if he does some development, you can react to it. I need to move my house to the back of my lot, and I need to redevelop it. But I'm not going to do it at my own expense. I don't believe I should. I think if Tateski took 930 feet off the road, he should be held accountable as far as that. I think that that type of development should take place within the bylaws and within my ability to move. But I cannot do it with what's down there right now. If I have a 10,000-square-foot lot on my property, I should be able to develop that so I'm not encroached upon. I'm encroached upon every day. I'm coming out of here to come up tonight, I'm blocked in, I'm in a house. I'm even blocked, even it gets to the stage when I'm blocked in to my house, going into my house, and the police right behind me. They don't even bother pulling over and doing anything to this guy, to these guys. It's naturally part of the environment. I accept that. I live down there. But I want some form of development down there that helps the abutters. And I don't want a 20,000-square-foot development down there. And that's where I'm coming from tonight, okay?
Great. Appreciate your comments. Thank you very much. Okay. Was there anyone else in the audience or gallery that now wants to speak on this non-conforming issue? Okay, great. Emily.
I move that we close the public hearing on the non-conforming bylaw, and then once that's done, I will move a recommendation.
We've got some letters that you should
Oh, you don't want to read all the letters? Or at least note who they are?
We'll note them to the record.
I want them to be in the record and have them posted on the site somewhere.
All right. Great. I will make sure these, or, Mr. Clark, you'll make sure that these get posted to the website, please. You have them. We all received them today. But we'll make note for the record that we have a letter dated Thursday, March 10th, 2016, at 4:23 PM from Maura Hamilton. And the subject is "Nonconforming Business in a Residential Area." We have a letter dated, again, today, 4:37 PM, subject "Proposal" from Andrew Hamilton 11@comcast.net. I assume that's, oh, sorry, it's at the bottom. My mistake. Andrew and Helen Hamilton. Sorry for giving your email address out. We have an email dated today, March 10th, at 1:30 PM, subject "Zoning Proposal" from Tracy Ataya, apologize on the pronunciation, from 10 Standish Road. We have a letter here dated today, March 10th, at 2:55 PM, subject "Nonconforming Business Proposal" from Melissa Petrell at 45 Martin Road. And we have a letter dated today at 2:03 PM, and that's "Proposed Zoning Bill" from Sheila LeBlanc at 167 Dudley Lane. Am I missing any?
I just want to
The, what you sent over.
Tim had forwarded a bunch of emails that you had emailed.
Oh, right.
Do you have them, Julia?
Yes.
Can you just read, you want to read?
Yeah. Sorry. It was just
Can I, want me to read these in first? All right.
Can I just have the list there, though? I'm looking for my copy, I can't find it.
Sure. We also have a letter dated March 9th at 9:10 AM, subject "Ice House," to, from, excuse me, Margaret Carells of 19 Gibbons Street. We have a letter dated March 9th at 7:30 PM, "Ice House Development Support Letter," dated, excuse me, from Keith Schlecker and Heidi Schlecker of 376 Blue Hills Parkway. We have a letter, this, we already have this one, we have this one, sexual, Hamilton. That's it. Go ahead, Cheryl.
Yep. On the letter from Maura Hamilton, there's a paragraph that I would like to make a comment about.
Okay.
Because I'd like it in the public record, since there's basically an accusation that I'd like to respond to.
Okay.
It says, "One of its members through her dealings had a financial interest in at least two of the parcels. Her participation raises concern. Although she states that there should be no concern, that in and of itself does not remove the concern with or the perception her dual roles, both as board member and through her professional as part of a development team portray." So I think we discussed this last week. The only project and only site that I've had any involvement with is the Blue Hill Ice Site. I was hired by the McKean family before I became a member of the planning board to help them assess what they might do in redeveloping that site. I performed architectural services through my companies, boulding to Gaius Architects, in looking at site planning analysis for that, and in preparing renderings, which could indicate what kind of development might happen there if they chose to develop it. That sat on hold for a time. It was unsure whether that was going to move ahead in any form. And then I was elected to the planning board. That moved forward, and it went to a special town meeting in February, at which time it was sent back to the planning board for further study. I have no, I am no longer retained by the McKean family to do any work for them on that property, and as far as I know, they have no proposal pending before this board or any other in town. The fact that this general bylaw may apply to this site, I think, does not represent a conflict of interest, as I stated last week. One of the reasons I helped Brian on this article is because I believe in proactive zoning. I believe that our town is going to be better suited if we start to look at what we would like to see in our town versus reacting to proposals that come to our town. And part of that has to do with my two years I spent on the master plan committee, listening to people in a lot of different forums and a lot of different events, reading through a lot of comments, and reading through a lot of backup material that our planning consultants provided us. These sites that are non-conforming, pre-existing uses are anomalies. It's not something somebody would say they're going to come in today and propose to put into a residential development. But the fact of the matter is, they exist. Are they, some of them blighted, maybe? Are some of them likely not to change, probably? But if we just sit and wait to see who's going to come along, we may not get what we'd like to see. If we are proactive, we may actually be able to attract the kind of development that people say they want in their neighborhoods. That is the reason I'm working on this. I've spent a lot of time looking at it and thinking about it. I'm very open to hearing everybody's comments and making this bylaw better. And if at town meeting, or even before, people decide that this is not a good way to go, then so be it. But I really do want to be clear that I have no conflict of interest, and I have no ulterior motives with this work. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will now move to close the public hearing.
Before we close, can I make a comment based on the last commentary on the issue of creating zoning bylaws in general?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Historically, within the town of Milton, the zoning bylaws that we have created have been bylaws caused and brought by existing demands for new development. Prime examples we have is our Class D zoning, where we created Ds, D1s, et cetera, in order to allow for affordable housing within the town, Fuller Village, the various other developments that we have. The non-conforming uses that we have within the town are all existing uses that blend into a neighborhood that have been there for years. The impacts of those uses have, are nominal on the respective neighborhoods. They're not conflicting uses. They might be considered under zoning thought process, remnant parcels that you might think to expand or change, and it's exactly that change that causes the problem. Whenever you add something to a neighborhood that's different, that is not, does not blend in, you change the density of development. If you go to three-story or four-story buildings down Randolph Avenue, that totally changes the character of the neighborhood on some of those non-conforming use parcels. So the whole concept of what we're talking about, and all due respect to everyone here at the table, from a long-term planning point of view, just doesn't work. We're much better off doing things the way we've done them for, I've been living in town for close to 50 years, and I've walked through these before, I've been on committees on how, on land use before within the town. I understand this. And the bottom line is, being proactive when we shouldn't be proactive, I think, would be a huge mistake.
Okay, one more try?
I just want to see if anybody else wants to speak.
Let's
Not, then I will move to close.
We have one more person from the public wanting to speak. Mr. Sloan? You have to come up to the table, please, still, you can be on the record. Speak on the microphone, yes, please.
Joe Sloan from 55 Concord Avenue. Just a point of information, I was just going to ask if you could clarify about the placement of the legal announcement that was in the Milton Times today about the continuation or
Right, I was going to bring that up on the discussion period.
It was just a question.
Thank you, Joe.
I did not see it.
So, I was going to wait for the discussion period on your motion, but I'll just bring it up now. There was a notice sent out to the newspaper saying that this meeting would be happening on the, let me see, on the 24th, 10th and the 24th?
Yeah.
So we probably need to leave the meeting open, or continue it until the 24th.
The notice could be canceled.
Can we cancel it? Okay. All right, fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
I will now move to close the public hearing, and if it's accepted, I have another motion.
Do I have a second on closing the public hearing? So, all in favor? Aye.
So I move that we recommend to both the warrant committee and to town meeting that this matter be sent back to the planning board for further discussion. And in saying that, I, first of all, I want to recognize the amount of work that both you and Cheryl have put into this. The presentation that you created for that public meeting, and that also you showed at the beginning of this hearing, that, I know, because I've seen it done professionally, that required a substantial amount of work. And to bring forward the ability for the town to see in a more concrete and visual fashion what the possible implications of the zoning are, I just want to recognize that that was a lot of work, and I for one really appreciate that you did that. I think anytime we are considering something new like this, the ability to be able to do these FIT studies, as they're called, and show what the possible implications are, are critical. And the fact that it was both numeric and visual, I really appreciate it. I think a lot of people have brought up both pro and con statements on this, many of which have identified both positive and negative implications of going forward with this type of zoning. I remain concerned about those non-conforming businesses and how they might be, how we might allow additional investment in them. I'm not necessarily convinced that allowing expansion, or allowing expansion to the level that was initially proposed, is a good idea, but that doesn't necessarily mean I couldn't be convinced. I think many of the implications that were brought up need further study, and I would like to have town meeting allow us that option of further study by sending it back to us. I think we've had a very, one of the reasons that I certainly voted to put this on the warrant in the first place was to get it to the point where people would take it seriously enough to comment on it. And I think that goal has at least been achieved. I can't remember if it was Mike or Alex that said at the meeting, you know, people won't take this seriously unless it's on the warrant. And I said to myself, well, fine, then. But, having said that, But, having said that, I think this has been a valuable conversation. More people have come either via email or to our meeting than, and participated than I had seen in previous efforts to engage the public. I think we, as a town, could go a lot further to engaging the public, but it's been a good start and I'd like to see this conversation continue. And I'd like to see further how we could explore getting additional comments. So, for that.
Second.
Thank you. I was just getting to the end of that.
I didn't second your comment. I seconded your motion.
Understood, understood.
Before I, before I call for a, a vote.
Further discussion.
I'm going to, I'm going to call for further discussion, and I'm going to start it off, actually. I want to add to Emily's recognition, the amount of work that went into reviewing this bylaw by members of this board, in particular Alex Whiteside, should be recognized. We have pages and pages and pages of commentary that, that probably challenged the amount of time that Cheryl and I spent writing and then studying subsequently this bylaw. So I want to recognize that time as well, as I want to recognize the public's time to Emily's point. This is an important issue. Whichever side you are on it, I think there's a lot to discuss, and I'm, I don't think the discussion is over. So I think there's much more work to be done. I also want to recognize the public for bringing forward some concerns about process issues, which I hope this board is taking to heart and working hard to try to improve on, whether that's working to find venues to give notice through or figuring out better ways to talk amongst ourselves and talk with you as the general public without getting ourselves in trouble with the public meeting laws that we all have to work with under. So, I am excited about the opportunity to continue this discussion in various forms. I think the fact that this is on the warrant, even though it will be sent back for further study, I think it gives the opportunity for town meeting members to give an opinion if they haven't had an opportunity to come into an informational session or to one of these meetings. So, again, I appreciate everyone's time in this room and everyone who's participated in the process outside of this room, and I look forward to continuing to discuss it. So, any other further discussion on this? All right, Ms. Cheryl.
I did want to have the opportunity, I mentioned to you Brian, the analysis because there was a question about how the formulas work. And because the bylaw and the presentation that was done two weeks ago are on the town's website and people are looking at it and commenting on it, I think it might be useful to run through how the formula works, because then Tim could put that on the town website, too. And then, you know, it's, it's just how it works. It's not anything more. Yes, Alex?
I, I think that we do have another bylaw to discuss. So if you can do it in minutes rather than a quarter hours.
Sure. The, the whole idea is to show it, and then if people have interest, then we can get it posted. I mean, that's the, so it's one site, and it just runs through how the, it works. So I can do it in five minutes.
If you can do it in five minutes, that's, that's fine.
Do you want to use your computer or that one?
Neither, on that, it's on the thumb drive.
We should take, let's finish the vote, and then we can do that as part of the public, so.
Comment?
Yes.
Going forward and further discussing this, whether it goes forward to town meeting or comes back to us, I really feel strongly that the abutters should be notified. Now, we notified the business people it's because it affects them directly. Well, in a sense, it affects the abutters directly because they now have a new right to sell their property for commercial use. So, I feel very strongly that the abutters should be notified.
So, Mike, this, if it comes back up, it will come back up as new business?
Yeah.
And it'll come back up as a new business item on the agenda, so we can, we should, we can discuss at that point who we want to notify. And we could talk about it right now, too, if you want, but it's, that's how it will come back up.
That's, that's fine.
This, this matter will be closed.
If we're going to cancel, just 24th, we're going to cancel the letters to the.
The letters have already gone out, so we have, but we will need to send the follow-up letter. I agree.
Saying that we're not going to hold the meeting.
I agree with that.
And then, we can discuss if we do a new notice to business owners, whether or not the abutters on either side should get the letter, too.
Yeah.
Another 30-second comment?
Absolutely.
Just because things were brought up tonight that were interesting. One of the abutters that brought up, you know, helping, the abutters with, it, both of my points lead to a certain thing, and that is, and Cheryl said that these sites are an anomaly, which I, I agree to, I agree with. And the fact that the abutter was getting into some very specifics, and the fact that Cheryl said these sites are an anomaly, they're unusual, to me loans itself to what Mr. Collins said and what I've agreed to in the past, and that is, I think that way we conduct business today, site by site, relative to the town of Milton, relative to the limited sites we have that fit this situation, best suit the town. And for the reasons, like you even brought up yourself, and they're anomalies. They're different. They're unique. I mean, the people that are for this sometimes, they have pictured in their head what they see going on on these sites. And now, and I'm not blaming, it's just hard to take a, a whole picture and decide what can and can't go on that site in a bylaw.
So, when.
So, my point is, these people picture something on the site with the, the lack of realization that their worst expectation could be what ends up on the site, not what they've got pictured in their head.
So, all of, so the good news is, and I think part of bringing this back and then rebeginning it as a public meeting, is that when we start the discussion next time, I think we should start it at that macro level and not, and rather than zoning in on the language first, let's have a conversation among the five board members about where we are on the position and then kind of go from there. So I think that's a, a good place, if you're all right, to leave it there, to have our vote, and then that'll be a good launching point for our next discussion. So, do, uh.
Just have one other comment before the vote. As far as process, I would like us not to lose momentum on the discussion of the, of the article, because we will soon find ourselves at the Maytown meeting, and we'll soon find ourselves in summer, and then we'll soon find ourselves in a position of not having people be available to participate, and then we'll be looking at whether we can do it for October, and then whether it should be next May. And this is the way zoning issues have gone. And so I do want to us to keep the foot on the pedal of looking at the zoning. And, and if we arrive at that it's not a good idea, then fine, but I just don't want us to put it aside again like we did at the end of the summer or in the beginning of the fall. Try and pick it up again. I mean, I think it's just going to be hard to engage people in this process if we keep doing that.
So, when we get to our new business section, you'll see that we now have a general zoning section in our new business that will roll into old business, and we'll be able to bring things up each week, and we'll just have to make sure we're disciplined about that, and, and, so thank you for that. Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No. Five, zero. Okay, you have the floor for five minutes, I believe. You were invited by Alex.
Okay, this is just one site to run through the formula. Brian went through, like, I think 18 or 20 sites last week, very quickly. So, next, Bill. So this is the Tedeschi's at Randolph in Readsdale. The blue outlines the property. Next, Bill. The blue, again, here, outlines the property. So this is in a residency zone. As far as Tim was able to ascertain in the records, this is, this business use exists by a number of special permits. It's the lot of 28,514 square feet. The existing building has a 3,952 square foot footprint. This comes off the assessor's data. So I, I can't verify that these numbers are 100% accurate, but we pulled them from assessing. Now, it's a commercial use, so if we had a commercial use elsewhere in town, our parking requirements for that commercial use are one parking space for every 250 square feet of floor area. So this use on this site, so this size building in a commercial use would require 16 parking spaces. In a residency, the setbacks are 20 feet from the front, 10 feet from the side, and 30 feet from the rear. When you have a corner lot like this, you have two front yards. There are some exceptions about the maximum. I'm just trying to give the, the basic overview. So, next. So this is the existing property in a diagrammatic way. The hospice is on the lower part of the slide. The, the site is on the upper part. And 16 parking spaces are shown here. The, the light gray that you see underneath is actually dirt, and then the sort of lighter gray yet is, is where there's trees and the other non-developed part of the property. So that's the existing condition. Next. Little bit closer view. This is what, go ahead, you can go. This is what Brian showed you last week. Now I'm going to break this down. Go ahead. Somebody asked how we arrived at, how do you, how do you know 350 square feet for a parking space? So the diagram on the right shows you a 24-foot drive lane. It shows you a parking space that's 19 feet deep by eight and a half feet wide. The hatched area is what you count for that parking space, and then you have to add a little bit for the drive that gets you in. So that's how you end up with 350 square feet per parking space. So, the way this bylaw is written, there's an open space requirement of 35% of the site. So if you take the 28,514 times the 35%, you know that you have to have 9,980 square feet of open space. So you take that out, and you know that you have land area available for parking and building of 18,534. So our formula was that we said, okay, for every 250 square feet of commercial area, we know we have one parking space required, and that's 350 square feet of site area for that. So you add the two together, and you get 600 square feet. So if you take the 18,534 and you divide it by the 600 square feet, you see that you can accommodate 31 parking spaces. So if you take the 31 parking spaces times the 350 square feet, you say, a parking lot for 31 spaces is approximately 10,850 square feet. So if you take your 18,000 of buildable area, subtract out that parking, that leaves you a footprint of 7,684 square feet maximum. So that, next. The blue shows the site area available within the setbacks. Next. This shows a single-story building of that square footage with 31 parking spaces. The expansion of the existing building, so the existing is white, the expansion in orange, and then the parking fits within the setback. So that's the single story. That's the diagram that Brian showed on the, on the first line in his one-pager. Next. So if we said now we wanted to do the combination where you could do that first-floor commercial and you could do the residential that's allowed in this proposed bylaw, you would still keep the same maximum footprint, because that's the most you're going to be able to, to build for the commercial space in this example. So we said, we still need the 31 parking spaces for that. If you did two floors up of that footprint, you would have 15,368 square feet of residential. The number we use in my work in our industry for an average two-bedroom of a condominium or an apartment would be 1,200 square feet gross. That accounts for corridors and stairways if, within, so it's about a thousand-square-foot unit. So if you said 15,368 divided by 1,200 gives you 12 two-bedroom units, six per floor. The bylaw says one and a half parking spaces per two-bedroom unit, that's 18 parking spaces. So the 31 required for the commercial, the 18 required for the residential is 49 spaces. Okay, one more minute. So 49 spaces times 350, there's a parking lot of 17,150 square feet. So 17,150 plus the footprint of the building at 7,684 is 24,834 square feet. So what this means is, we can't do this level of development on this site if it doesn't expand, because we don't have the required open space. So the bylaw on a small lot is allowing for an expansion if the owner can acquire adjacent property of three times the existing area, up to 40,000 square feet. So in this case, if you want 40,000 square feet times 35% open space, you would have 14,000 square feet of open space required. So you would be able to accommodate this level of development on a, on a 40,000-square-foot site. Next. And this is the diagram, I think, that we showed you last week, except that there's a green tone put on the open space buffer. So that's the required number of parking spaces in the three-story building. So that's how the numbers work, and those are the diagrams that correspond with the numbers. Hopefully that helps everyone understand it. This is the only one I've done this for.
And we'll put an explanation on the site.
That's a wonderful diagram to show why the bylaw should not be considered.
Thank you. So, thank you for doing that, Cheryl. This was very helpful. We got a lot of questions on that.
And we'll put this on the site.
And we'll put this on the website along with all the other information that's up there. All right, we're going to move on to the bed and breakfast bylaw now.
And once we have, Mr. Chairman, once we've heard from the public, I have a motion on this one as well.
Okay.
Be pleased to hear. I don't know, Alex, you don't know what it's going to be.
Well, what I'd like to do, if you don't mind, I don't, I don't have any, I don't have any preamble to the bed and breakfast. Before we go to public discussion while the room is clearing, why don't you give us your public comment of where you think you're going here, if you don't mind, so that we have a general idea of what we're going to be talking about.
Just fill in advance? Yeah, I think that's reasonable. And thank you for the recognition. So, I actually would also like to send this back to the planning board for a couple of reasons. I have been in favor over the years of looking at bed and breakfasts for Milton. For, one, I think it's an amenity that would be appropriate for this area. And two, I do see it as the ability to help with two things. One is preservation of larger historic homes for this might be a reasonable use. And the second thing is, you know, it is, as I said, it allows for an amenity that is missing here. We have a number of schools, both Curry College, Milton Academy, Fontan Academy, and Milton Academy and Curry College in particular, have people coming from out of town and out of state to get their education here. And presumably, parents and other family members come for graduation ceremonies. And presumably, parents and other family members come for graduation ceremonies. It might be nice to have them have the ability to stay in town. I think with our incredible natural resources that many people come to visit, it might be something nice for people to come and stay in the area and take advantage of those. And if they spend some dollars in the town at our fine restaurants, that's fine by me.
As long as they don't.
Yes, they have to obey the traffic and parking laws. Agreed, Alex. And the other thing is we do have proximity to Boston. And so, you know, I think, I do not have data for this, but I think there's a reasonable assumption that at least a few bed and breakfasts in town could easily survive on what we have. I am, however, concerned about the bylaw, the way it's written. And again, I appreciate the amount of work that you put into it. Alex, of course, has given many comments on it, which were all, I think, very helpful. But it goes considerably beyond the requirements that I've seen for other B&Bs in different towns. And what happens in other towns is not necessarily appropriate for Milton. I certainly recognize that. You know, every town has its own needs and desires. But the bylaw as written is moving into the issue of regulating the interior of B&Bs. The minimums and maximums, you know, we received some comments, remember the public, that maybe our maximums are a little too high. And in fact, our minimums are a little too high. Why not just allow it to be one or two, you know, have it be a minimum of maybe they just, somebody wants to just offer one room. And actually, if we did that, it might actually apply to Airbnb, which is another concern of mine. I think 10 rooms is a little bit too high. I worry that the restriction to it being 5,000 square feet or more might have some unintended consequences. I almost think that the off-street parking restriction is enough to restrict the ability to have one of these. So I just think, and it may be that members of the public who are going to speak on it tonight will have their own thoughts and it might be something that's easily correctable. But I think it's something that I'm pleased is going to town meeting finally for discussion. But my view is that I think it will, it might make sense to send it back and continue on the same lines that we're continuing with the non-conforming, with a little bit extra time for people to discuss it. Certainly in past discussions, we've not received a whole lot of negative comment on it. But also, the current version is a lot more restrictive than the previous version that's been out there. So that's just where I'm going. I am delighted to hear from the public on it, so.
Do you have anything?
I have, I think that, I've made some comments. I don't, I think that if we can get citing, figure out citing, and I've made a number of suggestions about things like revocation of the permit and how we get the police, I mean, a lot of stuff that we need to think about. I think that sending it back is the right thing to do. But I do think that, I think that this one offers some hope.
You know, I think it's very close and I think it could easily be done in October. I'm worried that the changes that we might want to make would take it out of scope for May. So, but I would definitely want it to be discussed at town meeting. I want to hear what people have to say tonight. I think it's pretty close. I just don't think that we can change it within the scope necessarily.
To the spirit of what we talked about earlier, I think this particular bylaw has not gotten discussion based on the fact that we've been spending enormous amounts of time on nonconforming.
Yeah.
I think, I agree with you, Emily. I think it's very close. I think it's, with some tweaking that could probably be done tonight, or if we can continue it until the 24th, we could probably get it done for May. However, I, you know, I'm not seeing a great deal of harm in postponing it, especially deferring to the process that we've been talking about tonight and making sure that this board has an opportunity to discuss it well from a macro perspective down. That said, I do think that both of the bylaws we've discussed have some hope. I just need to point that out. But I do believe this bylaw is close and I think it's a very important bylaw for a number of reasons. In addition to what you said and sort of adding to what you said, we have, I believe, the last time I checked, around 15 bed and breakfasts in Milton through Airbnb.
Yes.
And that is probably one of the biggest reasons, in my opinion, that we need to figure out a way to start finding ways to regulate these, not only from an income perspective, because I think the income is probably marginal. I think it probably is positive revenue, but it's not going to change the town.
Right.
It'll probably pay for itself and therefore pay for the amenity that it brings. But more from the standpoint that we want to make sure that if we do have businesses in town, that they are being properly vetted by the Board of Health and that we don't have people having boarding houses and those types of things in the town where they're not zoned. So I think it's an important bylaw. We also have a fair number of homes in the town that are coming to market that are very large and this may be a good use. So if it can be done in a certain way, I think it is a good bylaw. Anybody else before I open it to the public?
I just, something came to mind, I'd like to see if we can't, the bed and breakfast, if we can't limit it to the number in a particular area, whether we say that, you know, one opens here, you can't have another one within a mile radius or whatever the case may be, whatever given distance, I just don't want to see a row of bed and breakfasts become a row of boarding houses.
I think that plays into Alex's citing. I think that's an important discussion to point as to how we do it. And I don't know if we can do that legally or not, as far as, you know, what you just suggested, as far as radius restrictions. But I'm sure there's a way through citing that we can figure out ways to make sure that we're distributing them properly.
Yeah. And that almost certainly is, I mean, without having seen the language, my guess is that would be out of the scope of what we have now.
Oh, yeah, I think so.
But I think it's an important discussion.
I mean, I think, to your point, Emily, we talked, you mentioned the fact that, you know, the minimum may be too, the maximum may be too high. That certainly could be brought down within the scope. But if we're going to be talking about raising, lowering the minimum, we're out of scope immediately.
Right, exactly.
And so it probably makes sense to have those conversations as part of a public meeting process. The good news is we can have input tonight, where we have not been able to have it yet. And we can also get it at town meeting as part of the warrant discussion before we have to have those public conversations.
Absolutely.
So does the, anybody here wish to speak to the bed and breakfast bylaw now that we've just canned it?
Well, your opinion is still valuable.
Mr. Sloan.
Thank you. Joe Sloan from 55 Concord Ave. But to your point of wanting to keep the conversation alive, I think the comments are very important, you know, regardless of the direction it might take going forward to town meeting. But very specifically, I also echo something that you said earlier about how valuable, for me and I know for other people, that Alex Whiteside's comments and observations about these things have been, I think it goes a long way to help the public understand language that can sometimes be very complicated and concepts that can be very complicated. And I think it's a treat to have those comments. And specifically, as it relates to the B&B and the citing comments that Alex has brought up, I ask that you specifically think about the concept of the residential districts in town and specifically the Residence C District. So that's where I live. I live in a Residence C District. Our houses are very close together. I live on Concord Ave. So think of all of those streets that cross from Brussels Road, Truman Parkway, over to Blue Hill Ave, over to Blue Hills Parkway, streets like Warren and Houston that we've talked about. But as well, the streets in East Milton, I think, are another really good example. There are tremendous issues that already exist on the narrow aspect of these streets. And in good weather, a lot of people, even who have driveways and very small garages that exist, a lot of people pretty much park on the street because there's a lot of coming and going. Very sadly, as Brian mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we had a terrible accident in the neighborhood. It was, in fact, someone who lived on Concord Avenue was the victim. There was, instantly, there was gridlock in our neighborhood yesterday. The police are to be commended for how they handled the situation. But traffic was diverted for a period of time up Concord Avenue and then they made another decision and kind of shifted it to Cheever Street because there's a light at the top of the street. But if you think about the width of the street and cars parked on either side, there was basically, there was access for one direction of cars. Cars could no longer pass in two directions. In the wintertime, Joe Lynch would know this, Director of Public Works, that there are ongoing issues with accessibility for snow removal vehicles on the street. And, you know, the police do as best they can to try to keep the streets clear. But on these streets, public safety is a big issue. Fire trucks that come up and down our street have to slow almost to a crawl to get past the parked vehicles that are on either side. I know that in other towns, specifically the news media has related issues in some Quincy neighborhoods that relate to this idea of how the influx of parking, even just a small number of cars, changes the dynamic of the neighborhood. So I would ask that you give some real consideration as to what even just a small number of cars could do to the dynamic that's in a neighborhood. Again, it would not be a seasonal use. This would be a year-round use. So think about what these streets are like in the wintertime, when we have a lot of snow and the roads get a little bit narrowed and parking is already limited to some degree. So there, give that some thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public wish to speak to the bed and breakfast bylaw? Okay. Oh, sorry.
Okay.
I've got two. Yep, go ahead. Ms. Swenson.
Should I go first?
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Denny Swenson, 65 Green Street. I think the goal of preserving our grand estates is a good one. I am not quite convinced yet that the article in its current form will do this in all cases. Mainly because if it's up to 10 rooms and the house needs to be got it on the inside, then you'd be losing the historical significance on the inside of the structures. And if we say up to 10, we would want to understand that the goals of the property owners would be to push it to 10 because that's where their profit would be, to make it worth all the adjustments they would have to make. The additional pavement and screening, if not done well or carefully crafted language, it could be ruinous for any historic landscape efforts. So keeping all that in mind. My first question is, has the Milton Historic Commission and/or Historic Society been consulted to troubleshoot concerns that they would like to see addressed? Their involvement in studying ways that B&Bs or other articles or other language, specific language, could be helpful in protecting some of these historic treasures around town and looking at towns like ours that have similar challenges? I think they'd be a wonderful resource in ensuring that an effort like this goes well. Second question, have we done the research on impact and potential impact? I'd be very interested to learn of other towns that incorporated bed and breakfasts effectively and those that did so poorly, so we can learn both lessons without having to go through the poor side of the equation. Third question, have we done our research on cost to the town versus revenue for the town? I know Brian at the beginning mentioned he thinks it might be a wash. But have we thoroughly assessed that? Board of Health, emergency vehicle visits, roadway repair and adjustments, all the various boards that will need to sign off on it, all the various routines, routine inspections and things that would need to happen that we don't currently do around town? And then some of the questions that Mike and Alex were talking about, you know, how many B&Bs could potentially pop up and where? It would be ideal to see a map and to sort of visualize this. You know, assessing the impact of one here or there is one thing, but a clump of bed and breakfasts hitting a single neighborhood would have a very different impact. And those needs would need to be thought of in the language in the document to protect those neighborhoods. So I understand that's on your agenda. Depending on the location, this is one, another reason I'm interested in seeing it on a map is I imagine a lot of these would go in the AA zone or double A or A zone. And we have a rich history of archaeological resource areas around the Blue Hills especially. And we also have a lot of rare species habitat that comes into places and things like more driveways in these wonderful estate lands, more pavement. You could add language to ask for assessments where it's likely, but it's not necessarily going to be likely in other parts of town. But that's one reason why I want to see a map. I'm also not yet seeing protective language, preventing this from falling under the non-conforming business use article that's in the works, if you will. It would be ideal if this protective language were located clearly in both articles so that there would be no confusion that a B&B could be used as a placeholder for future business use later on. So my question would be, will you be adding protective language so B&Bs won't fall under non-conforming business use in the future? So I hit you with five questions.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I can answer the questions quickly. I think at this point, the language is going back for further study and all of these will be taken as comments to be addressed as part of that discussion. Certainly, we have not consulted with historical and I think it's a good idea, so that's certainly something that we can put on our list. As far as research on impact from other towns, we could certainly look into that. We have bylaws and we have studied the bylaws from other towns. I think Emily suggested at the beginning that our bylaws are actually, the bylaw that's drafted is in many ways more restrictive than most of the other towns, but we will continue to look at that. Cost-benefit analysis, we're trying to figure out the best way to do that and we will continue to try to figure that out and continue to try to craft language so that at least this remains revenue-neutral. How many B&Bs could pop up? I can't answer that question, especially since it's coming back for further study and the language may change, but it's something we'll continue to look at. And then as far as the language for the non-conforming use, I had actually already tried to start figuring out how to avoid that unintended consequence in the general bylaw and we'll continue to make sure that that happens as part of, because that certainly would be an unintended and not desirable consequence. So stay tuned, I guess. Did I miss anything on that?
No, you got it all. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Denny.
Actually, can I make a point to that? The idea of mapping would be interesting. I have not used Airbnb and I haven't been on it in a while to check, but do they give the address of the B&B?
They do, you can actually map it right on Airbnb.
That might be worth doing.
Pretty interesting just to see where it is. I actually did it at the office and just, I was just curious. And they're actually, right now, they're all over town. Because, you know, Airbnb can be anything from an apartment in someone's barn.
Right.
In a residence double A district to a room in someone's house in, you know, the Village or East Milton Square, to a room in a condo or an apartment.
Yeah. I have a friend not in Milton who has one.
I think there was just a story about someone who did Airbnb and an igloo they built in their front yard. So it's a...
That is seasonal.
That is definitely seasonal. So, but you can map it and I have mapped it and it's, right now, it's pretty well distributed. So it's a starting point certainly to see where they are today.
Right.
But they're not legal anyway.
Right, exactly.
I would caution against using that as a two-directive analog. One of the things that they do, especially in the housing realm in terms of Airbnb as sort of displacing, you know, housing from the marketplace, will use, sort of, they'll look at the number of reviews because that's sort of like an indicator of, you know, this is a place that's been rented out multiple times. They'll look in terms of, is it a whole house or is it just a room? That's an indication of, you know, if someone owns a house and they've been Airbnb-ing a room in that house, they're probably not going to turn their whole house into bed and breakfast. Whereas if someone is renting out their whole house on a frequent basis, then that's sort of, so, but that's all, I mean, people map that all the time. So it's, you know, it's a little bit more of a granular approach, but it's still doable.
One thing that could be looked at though by what you just said, Tim, is from a demand standpoint, if you look at Airbnb, if we can see on Airbnb how many times they've been rented, which it seems like we can, we could certainly see if there's parts of town that are getting more demand than other parts of town because there's nothing to stop someone from Airbnb, but there's no requirement to implement any of the things that we're talking about in our bylaw. There's nothing to stop anyone from throwing a room on their house on Airbnb and see if they can make a little cash. But if no one's staying there, that could certainly help to start to dictate the market demand for it.
I think that's a really interesting point. I think another interesting point is there is a companion article that will, that is not a zoning article, so it's still going to town meeting, which is the hotel tax article. It will be on the warrant for town meeting and I wonder what implications that has for Airbnb. It's an interesting question.
It is an interesting question.
So...
Well, we can pass it and see what the assessor puts up.
Exactly. Let the assessors figure it out.
Okay, so...
I think there was one other person who wanted to speak.
Oh, yes, did you want to speak, Mary? Thank you, yes, all right. Thank you for the reminder, Emily.
I have already sent the planning board some comments and so I'm just going to speak briefly. But just in general, when I read this bylaw draft, it was a little different than what I had imagined as a bed and breakfast bylaw. That doesn't mean it's wrong, but it just wasn't what I, when I think about bed and breakfast, I think of it as more of an incidental use in a house where a couple of bedrooms or one bedroom might be rented on a nightly basis to people and breakfast is served. It's sort of a, it's, I know it doesn't always work that way. In Nantucket, a whole house may be a bed and breakfast, but somebody still serves breakfast and it still feels like a house. So there are different ways to approach it. But my, I believe that, well, I was shocked when I saw 10 bedrooms as the maximum because I think something that has 10 bedrooms for rent is a motel or a hotel or, it just seemed like too much to me.
Or an.
So, I mean, this is just my gut reaction. I don't, you know, know if everybody will react the same way and I already told you that in my comments originally. that in my comments originally. I thought 10 was too many. I was really surprised when I saw the minimum number of bedrooms, because I, my view of bed and breakfast is as small as possible is better. It's a use that in theory fits in with a residential neighborhood. It's a, it's a business use that has a residential form, because you're having people sleep in a bedroom and you're serving them breakfast, which we do in our houses. So I'm not sure you need a minimum, and I don't, I don't think you should have 10 as a maximum. I don't know what it should be, because you do have some large, beautiful estate houses where certainly several bedrooms, maybe as many as five, even could be managed, and you could still have somebody living in the house. But remember, this bylaw requires that a family lives in the house still. Second thing is, I didn't say anything about this in my comments, but I have been thinking about it in parking. There's a number of provisions in the bylaw that address parking. It needs to be addressed very carefully, because the existing need for parking for residences is much higher than it was once thought to be. So when you say you need to have two parking spaces in a house, and then you can, and then you need a certain number for each bedroom for bed and breakfast, I think you might need more than two. You might need to require a minimum of more than two for the residential use, because the reality is that many households have more than two cars, because they have, you know, they have a child who has a car or the child's still living there, you know. And we have problems with this and have had for many years in Milton with families that have five or more cars, you know, on a house that's on a small lot that has a driveway and may or may not have a garage, and the cars just don't fit. So you need to take that into account when you think about minimums for parking. All characteristics of a bed and breakfast, bed and breakfast conditions, in my opinion, should maintain the residential appearance of the house. In other words, you shouldn't be particularly aware that it's there. If it, if there are a number of bedrooms and you're going to allow up to five, you're going to have to have a substantial amount of parking, and it's most likely not going to exist to begin with, it's going to have to be created. So that's where the regulation, the bylaw, needs to be very carefully written to control what that parking needs to be like, how far it needs to be from adjacent residences, how it needs to be screened and virtually invisible, really. Because otherwise, you really, you have the same problem we're talking about with nonconforming businesses and everything else, which is that you really have too much of an effect on adjacent residential houses. I don't know whether you can regulate where they are. And I'm not sure whether you can legally write a bylaw that says, you know, this house can have a bed and breakfast, but this one can't. So that's something to think about. It's a valid question and concern, but I don't know whether it's possible. I'm not so concerned about a cost benefit analysis. I don't think of this really as something that's going to generate a lot of tax revenue for the town. I think of it as a convenience, as a nice thing, that, you know, if you're a parent visiting a child at Curry College, you might be able to find a bedroom in a house to stay in with your fam, with your husband or something when you come to visit. That when you have guests and you don't have a very big house and you'd like them to stay nearby, that you might find a place in Milton where they can stay. I don't, I think Milton is close enough to Boston that some people might come here and use this as a base to visit the city, but I don't think it's going to be a primary use. So this issue has come up over and over again over the years, and people, we've attempted or started to draft bylaws. I remember the house next to Trailside Museum that's on Canton Ave, when it's changed hands, often people think of that house as a place where you could have a bed and breakfast and a residential, because it's a difficult house residentially, although it's been occupied by families and it's sold each time. But that house has had difficulty selling, because I think it's between two very busy streets. But it has a lot of attractions as a place where you could have some bedrooms available for guests, because you could create parking. It's not really next to other residences. It's near the, near the Blue Hills. It's near, you know, Children's Museum. So I think there are good locations. I think it's worth pursuing. I think there has to be a way we can write this bylaw, or you can write it and we can help you by providing more comments. I don't really agree with the size limitations that you have currently in it. And I've read Alex's comments carefully, but I haven't fully absorbed them, but I think it's that type of detail you have to think about. I hope you do get more feedback, because I don't think you're going to be able to tell what people are really looking for until you do. And that's my feeling about what I'm looking for. I'm honestly not sure what other residents might think. Maybe they do want them to be a little bigger and more accommodating. Maybe they are afraid of, if you're really careful with the parking requirements and screening and the no change in external appearance, the, some, the other limitations either aren't required or will fall in place with that. Finally, as far as, you know, retaining old estate properties or keeping them in use, this is a way to use a large property with a lot of bedrooms. And if you require that a family still be living in the residence, then you're not going to be completely gutting the property and turning it into a hotel or motel if you don't have too many bedrooms. You could have as many as five, and still have two or three children living in a house and have enough bedrooms in some of those very biggest of these houses, but there aren't many of them. I like that idea. I think that's one reason to continue to look at this, but the main reason, I think, is it's a nice thing, it's a convenient thing. All the bed and breakfasts I've ever stayed in have been small, two or three bedrooms at most, and they're great. I love staying in bed and breakfast. It's much more welcoming than a hotel or a motel, so, and they're always in towns, residential towns and that type of setting. So I think it can work, and I hope you'll keep working on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Okay, any further discussion?
On the number of bedrooms, something to consider, because the Salton Stall House was for sale recently. I don't know if it's still on the market. I toured it, and I know that's one that somebody came to a condo working group meeting and said they would be interested in turning into a bed and breakfast. So when I walked through it, I tried to get a sense in my mind whether it would work as a B&B. And my sense is if you had only five bedrooms, you'd have the entire upper floor vacant, because you would have the middle floor as your five and probably still have extra room. And then the whole first floor could be the owner's residence and the common areas. So I don't know if it would work then as an any incentive for a house of that size. So that's kind of the dilemma to think about and to look at. I don't know if that's still for sale and anybody else can go take a look at it. I mean, it would be worth doing if it's still on the market.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's part of the, part of the balance here is, you know, I think we've been careful not to go across a line where we would be calling any of these ins.
Yes.
And I think in, to me, in applies for-profit, bed and breakfast provides, implies, at least the ones I've stayed at have implied supplemental income or amenity or hobby in some cases. I don't, I, having a bed and breakfast in our family, I can't imagine why anybody thinks it's a good hobby, but that is what it is. So in any case, I think it's a good point, but I think, I don't think, the primary objective of this bylaw anyway, I don't think, at least is initially intended, and Emily, you submitted the first draft, was, was to create for-profit, you know, large for-profit facilities. I think if we were looking at that, we'd be talking about events and everything else.
My comment is relative to whether it's, one of the goals is to preserve grand estate properties.
Understood.
And my concern is that we'd have to make sure that we understand if, you know, what the minimum number of rooms would be to make it worthwhile for someone to make it into a bed and breakfast, because at a certain point, if half, half of it has to be vacant, I mean, the, according to the realtor that I spoke to when I did tour it, it's very difficult, some of the grand estates, depending upon how much land they're on, because they're much larger than a house that somebody would occupy today.
Right.
And you have what was probably staff quarters, you know. So it's just, if that's one of our goals, I think we just have to be careful and look thoroughly, and maybe what other towns have done, where they, their goal has been to preserve the larger houses.
Different criteria for different sizes.
So when I originally submitted it, I was thinking more of the incidental use, and I was thinking of historic homes, but not necessarily grand estates. I actually spoke to the woman who had thought about purchasing the Salton Stall, the Salton Stall House, and discussed with her what she was thinking of doing, and she was thinking of it as an inn. She did not want to own it, or own and occupy it. She was thinking of having a manager run it. I said, you know, that's great, but that's not what I was contemplating with the B&B, with the original B&B bylaw. So, you know, I said if she was interested in pursuing that, she ought to come in and look at zoning to do an inn. She wanted to do events there. She was looking at a much larger thing, and I think since then, she's dropped off the radar. I don't think she's interested anymore. But certainly my original one, my original thought on this was much closer to Marian's idea of incidental use, no exterior changes, maybe a small sign, parking on site, but obviously, you know, that would have to be carefully considered. It was not meant to be necessarily preserving a grand estate, but definitely looking at historic homes, you know, so I want to make that distinction.
Okay, do I have a motion to close the public hearing on this? Warrant committee motion.
The move.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I would like to move that we recommend to both the warrant committee and Town Meeting that this article be sent back to the planning board for further study.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, and all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right, that will do it for our zoning discussions. We are now going to move into our, we're going to reopen our eight o'clock public hearing
Mr. Corcoran, the floor is yours once again. Thank you, and nice to be back. Ned Corcoran, on behalf of Dennis and Martha Burke, who are the owners of the property at 245 Highland Street, I'm joined by Martha Burke, and Jim DeSalle from DeSalle and Burke, different Burke, who has prepared the preliminary subdivision plan. This is a lot of land that contains, I think one of the things that's missing on the preliminary plan, but it is, the land area, total land area is 340,000 square feet. It's a little less than eight acres. It fronts on Highland Street. It's right at the crown of Highland Street, and it butts the Fletcher Steel subdivision done by the Corcoran family some time ago. It's between Highland Lane subdivision and Fletcher Steel. The proposal is to create six new conforming house lots. We gave some consideration as to how the sites would, the lots would be situated on the property, but the notion is that we could have provided frontage for four of the lots on Highland Street, which would have created new driveways out, or we could have done what we proposed with a proposed new roadway in with the lots. The four front lots being perpendicular, or parallel to Highland Street, so that we are simply relocating the existing driveway, create the new roadway. And then the two larger lots in the rear, one with the existing dwelling that the Burks live in today, and then they have a barn and a garage currently on a separate lot. And so we'd create six lots, two larger lots in the rear, four slightly more than 40,000 square feet each with adequate frontage on the front. Proposal is to, for a public way, it's for the town to accept the roadway. We've asked for two waivers from the, it is a bituminous concrete driveway. And the big issue really, at the end of the day, is stormwater management and handling of drainage. Thus, the, as I said, the, I'm going to ask Jim to get into the more particular, the details, but Highland Street, the crowns, right essentially at the front entrance, comes up the hill and back down the hill to the other side. Most of the site slopes from the southwest corner, approximate to Fletcher Steel and north. And so the proposal is for two detention areas, one in each of these two lots, to handle drainage that would come from the roadway and other impervious surfaces. It'd be homeowners association. The association will be required to maintain the drainage structures. There is a, ultimately a tie to the town's drain system for overflow purposes, but with respect to that, that's the basic condition of the subdivision. I'd ask Jim to explain anything else in detail and then open it up to the board for questions. Thank you.
Hi, Jim DeSalle from DeSalle Burke Associates. The drainage is pretty straightforward. Each individual house will be designed with a roof runoff cul-de-sac system that'll handle the roof runoff. This area over here, which is cul-de-sac of the underground, is strictly for the road. And it's pretty straightforward. We have the cul-de-sac system here, and then this is a low spot right here. We have another system here that is designed to handle the 100-year storm. And in extreme case, there'll be an overflow that will go into the town system. We're working with the town on that when we get into the definitive stage. Besides that, we'll have sewer water and cable will all be underground. Each lot will be served, you know, will be served by underground utilities. The road, street will, you know, the requirement for street trees and everything else will be maintained. So the only waiver that we're actually asking for is sidewalk on one side and the pavement width of 24 feet as opposed to 28 that's shown on the detail.
There also will be a need for scenic road permit, because this Highland Street is a scenic road. We're basically essentially moving the existing opening for the current driveway, approximately 60 feet towards the southeast, using the same stone pillars and finishes at the current So when we, when we apply for the final, for the definitive subdivision, at the same time, we'll be requesting a permit for the scenic road, under the scenic road bylaw. And I can pass this around. This is a preliminary draft of the application with a photograph of the entrance as it's Then I'll open it to questions.
Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, on the existing conditions plan where you're showing the existing driveway, you've got a number of what look like to be fairly mature trees on either side of it. Can you discuss how the proposed road will affect those trees?
Proposed road won't affect them at all.
Okay.
The installation of two new dwellings will.
Ah, well, there you go. More details, please.
So the roadway will be shifted to the southerly side of that. But given topography, given the location of the drains, of the stormwater management structures, one of the dwellings will be constructed right over the top of the existing driveway, where several of the trees are located, and the second dwelling would be right up on top of it. So, you know, there may be some opportunity to save some of those trees, but I think it's unlikely that there would be really much opportunity to do that.
Can I ask a follow-up question? Brian?
Oh, sorry, yes.
Did you, I know you're doing this under subdivision control. Did you consider using the cluster bylaw? The cluster development bylaw?
We, we did. This is really intended, one of the, the Burks are going to remain in one of the lots. Their daughter's going to have a house in another lot. They're really thinking about this as a subdivision with nice large lawns and swing sets and...
That's fine, I just wondered. So that's... Question?
Yes.
So the drainage structures, is that at the low end of the topography? Can't, without my glasses, yeah? All right, so to Emily's point about the trees and looking at, having Tim bring up big maps here, is there, is that the only location, or can you modify that location such that, I know the houses will need to, but you're pretty close to the road with it, and there probably could be some tree preservation along the scenic road there if you didn't have to build so close to the road with that one structure?
In this area here?
Yeah, up a little bit.
Well, this is where the driveway is.
No, up where your structure is, right there.
Well, that's actually open. It's before the edge of the woods. You can, we have the edge of the woods delineated there. You can, we have the edge of the woods delineated there?
Yeah.
Then I'm, the over, then the overhead, can you zoom that in, Tim? So the driveway, so is this the driveway coming in?
You can see the trees lining in.
Yeah, this is the driveway coming in, right?
Yes.
And so you're putting it right here, right?
It's a little, yeah.
I mean, looking at the map, that's about where it is, right?
Yeah. But we have it in the, outside of the edge of the quote-unquote woods lining there.
So are you?
This is like overrun grass.
Right, so then if I'm looking at the Lot 1, the buildable area section though, is there an easement required for those structures?
Yes.
So that's not actually, they're not actually shown on?
He's shown, he's been.
Maybe on the other page?
He's shown, he's an area shown on the last page.
So I guess my question, I mean, really is related to how much site disturbance is going to be required to install the drainage system and the piping in that corner of the property, and whether there's any way to modify it to have less disruption to that existing mature tree stand that's in there.
You're talking to this corner?
Right.
I think it's a little deceiving, the way you're looking at it there, because we have, we have kept it outside into the, what was a moat area.
So maybe the way to clarify that is to add the existing large-scale trees? I see you're saying, are there only two trees at a large scale in there? The 48-inch and the 36-inch? I'm looking at sheet, what sheet is this? Two?
Sheet two.
Two. The 36 and the 48, right?
They.
I don't know, it seems like there's more there than two trees.
Those are, those are still shown, I think.
I'll look into it, but I, but I believe, excuse me, that those were just, that they just stood out, those are two big pine trees.
And then the other trees that are along the roadway, are those in the right of way or are those on the property?
They're on the property.
Okay, and I guess, you know, what we've done on other subdivisions is we've asked for a tree, existing condition plan that has the trees, and then a pre-tree preservation plan.
Okay.
Because to the extent that we can plan around some of the trees, I think it.
Yep.
It helps preserve, actually even the stormwater drainage, you know, infiltration is better not to disturb, you know, all of it. So for, for consistency in that request, I'd like to request that for this.
And that was actually sort of to the point of the question about the cluster bylaw is more, is there another way of citing this so more of those mature trees can be preserved and continue to add an amenity to all of those lots, so.
I think the cluster bylaw is applicable by right to 10 acres or more, but it may be applicable by special permit.
It was, it was sort of more to the idea of that, basically, is had you considered re-formattating the, the structure of the lots to work with the topography and the, the existing trees?
I think in either case. I think in either case, if the lots are cited this way, this very, there's a lot of destruction of trees. The, our starting point was minimizing access points and driveway openings to Highland, to Highland Street. Because if, if, if this were a roadway that served simply two lots back here, or even if they, if they served this lot and this lot, you're still having a driveway access and a driveway access.
I wasn't necessarily meaning that so much, but you've got a nice straight road there. Is there a way that, and you've got, you've got lots with different square footage going on here. Is there a way of thinking how those lots and the road work?
I think you're onto something too, Emily, because I'm looking at sheet four, and there's a lot of regrading, to do the drainage and the grading that's required here, all those trees would have to be removed and.
Right.
And I'm not sure you really have to do it that way. I mean, maybe you have to, to meet the roster variances, but, you know, I for one would encourage you to look at it a little bit more with the preservation of the topography and the, and the landscape and see if you can come up with something that works for you. Because I think the scenic.
Perlinear.
I think the scenic roadways are more than just stone walls, they, they have to do with the, you know, the large-scale trees and the character of buildings, you know, back and trees and the, you know, it's the whole thing, it's not just the stone wall. So.
Yeah, I'm thinking of the discussion we had on Brush Hill Road. With the idea that the road, the, the new road was not coming down at right angles to the scenic road, that there was this ability for it to curve, and you've got, you've got the ability to do some design work there that I think would be more of an amenity to the houses that are to be built and to the neighborhood without.
Discuss on the other part.
Causing, I mean, the working with the topography is going to be better for you than trying to go against it.
Which.
And going to the trees.
Which subdivision on?
It was the one that came forward for the old house that had hardly burned.
Between the Boyle.
That's it, yeah, thank you.
And you might have, in Carisbrook Drive, they had a straight one, and their designer came in and said, you know, this street has to be bent a little bit, and if you just look at the little bend they put in, it just makes a huge difference.
Yeah.
A huge difference, so you, the, the straight street shouldn't be a straight street, and I wonder whether or not it should be a public street.
Yeah, that was one of my questions as well.
Yeah.
What was the, what's the, I guess I know what the reasoning is, but what's the thought process behind coming back to the, having it come back to the town? Just, the last few we've seen have not done that, so.
In this case, they, they, you know, they want the town on the road.
Okay.
Which I think the DPW director has indicated, he doesn't want it to be a public road. So that's.
That's something that needs to be worked on. Is that, is that true?
Wait a minute, when did he say that?
I think that he, he said new roads, that they're not interested in accepting new roads.
No, he's not, he's not interested in accepting any private ways. He's, he will have nothing to do with private ways.
Okay, he isn't, well, why don't?
Public roads, public roads he wants, because he gets shut to 90 money for it. He wants public roads, he doesn't want anything to do with private ways.
All right.
That makes sense.
Okay.
Yeah.
Maybe he could weigh in on that for us in an email, just so we can understand.
Maybe, yeah, maybe he can weigh in.
I'll give you back what he said.
That'd be helpful.
Yes.
That would be helpful, thank you.
Yeah.
What was the given distance we talked about in another project, the road's supposed to stay straight for a given distance, right?
Oh, it, there is no given distance.
That's, I think that's what we came up with.
The right angle, the right angle is, there's no distance provided, so it turns out to be a paper tiger.
It has to be safe, obviously, for fire engine access, you know, the, the radius for them to swing around, but yeah, we didn't, we didn't have a specific given distance of straight, so. But given the current character of Highland Street, the existence of the mature trees, the existence of this type of topography, the fact that you do have room within the allocated square foot of each of these lots, I would definitely recommend looking at a different road layout. And again, I think it would add to the amenity of the, and the value of the houses you're proposing to put there, the lots.
It may decrease the construction cost by the sounds of it.
Yeah, I think so.
Potentially, substantially, so that, there's even more.
Decreasing construction cost is always a good thing, so.
You're saying, you're saying curve, just curve the road?
Yeah, curve the road to take into account the natural topography and the existence of the trees.
But Emily, are you open to adjusting the, where the curb cut is? I mean, it's already moving at once, so does it, if it doesn't matter to move it down a little bit?
If we're moving it anyway, yeah, exactly.
If it makes for a better roadway and a better condition on these lots?
Right. I mean, we're going to reconstruct the radius in, I mean.
You're hearing suggestions from the board as opposed to requirements, and we're suggesting that there are ways to do it cheaper and maybe more aesthetically, so. We, this is a public hearing, does anyone here wish to speak from the public? All right, great, so could the applicant just step back and allow them access to the microphones?
Yeah, hi, my name's John Neary, I live at 10 Highland Lane, it's the corner of Highland Street and Highland Lane. So I guess I might be direct about it to the, this where the drainage thing is. This is a long driveway that goes into the property behind it, and then, so I'm right at the corner. And that was my main concern, when I first, I've been up there since 1998, and, so you built a, my house was built in 1976, and they built the house behind me in 1994. And when they built that house, they didn't bring the stormwater drainage out to the street, or the gutter, wherever it's supposed to go. It was kind of woods, woody, it's a wooded area, so it was kind of just brought into the woods. But it did affect my property, and then when I bought the property in 1998, I had to put a French drain along the outside of the, my entire property and around the foundation, and with a pre-existing one inside too. So, so water is a problem up at that area. But I totally support the Burkes' application here, as long as the stormwater issues are mitigated somehow, and it seems like they do have that in the plan. The only other thing I have is Highland Street is probably, it's a raceway, all right?
Yes.
I mean, I would like to see if they're going to put a development in there, maybe another stop sign there at the corner of Highland Street and Highland Lane and Clifton Street. Because right now, it's, I mean, unfortunately, we had that person killed yesterday, and there's no sidewalks up that, that end of Highland Street, and it's a little bit of a curve, if you notice, it kind of go curve, and it really, really, people come whipping around that corner and they just fly. So people coming out of the, I like the design in that there's only one entrance, because now if you have a lot of driveways there, it's a, it's a curve, you're more apt to have a traffic accident, but you have to slow the traffic down on Highland Street somehow. I know years ago, I've been, I've been in the town 30 something years now, that they did the Islands on Howland Ave. That didn't help, I actually.
Stop signs.
Stop signs.
Right.
But it's, the traffic here is unbearable, all right? And I know they want the chapter 40B, that's on, on the property, that makes lane, and that's another issue, but the people are coming up Clifton, there's lots of children on Clifton, Clifton Road, they come flying up the street to avoid the light, Tedeschi's there. So that whole development in the area, I mean, you have to look at it, besides just this particular property. But I support the Burkes in, in what they're doing, I just would like to see a stop sign at Clifton Road and Highland Lane, and some sort of mitigation with the water.
Are you suggesting a four-way stop there? Is that what you're suggesting, or a stop?
Well, right now, they have stop signs, when you come up from Milton-Hawesville, there's a stop sign, I know, there's a Buckingham, then there's another street, Spaffett, I forgot which ones they have it on. And then the next street up is Clifton, right there, they need another one, because if the people exiting the property, you know, they, they fly, I mean, you know, I'm surprised that the street with the police station, that they fly so fast, you know? But it's newly paved, actually, the section there. But no, we support, we support the development, and we wish them luck, they're long-time residents, and I know they'll do a good job, but just somehow prevent the water from coming out to my, my property. It seems like they already took that into consideration.
That's one of the reasons too for the, when we've seen this on a couple other proposed subdivisions, is the, the more you disturb the existing landscape and the trees and the so forth, it, it's more than to handle with the stormwater. So that's where I think, you know, we could help the situation if they could look at the location.
We've been fortunate this year, that it's been a warm winter, but a lot of times, especially in the spring, you'll see the water come off, off my property, their property, and you'll just get that black ice right there on the corner, and, you know, I think every single telephone call at one time when Highland Street's been hit in Brooklyn, you know? So something to slow down the.
That's a consistent comment all across town, I have to say.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's become a cut-through town, and it's sad, you know? But I know the Burkes will do a great job and support their development, and they don't have any problems, you know? As long as it works. All right, thank you.
All right, what's the board's plan there?
I think that we've made some suggestions, and I think that we understand that this development is going to happen, but we hope that the suggestions are given serious consideration because we think it would be a better development if they were to be, insofar as possible.
We appreciate the suggestions, and we will take them into due consideration and do our best to effect a good outcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving right along.
Are we, you have this as a, a public hearing?
Oh, yes, so we should probably, yes, can we close the public hearing?
Yeah, we can close the public hearing.
Great.
I'll even make that motion, since you're looking expectant.
I would welcome a motion.
Okay, so.
Thank you.
Or seconded.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you for the.
Closing the hearing. Closing the public hearing, Mike.
Sorry, Mike, not yet. All right, we have a few new business items.
Does it have to be a vote on the preliminary subdivision?
For respective.
Do you want to ask that louder, so that the?
Does, does there have to be a vote on the preliminary subdivision? So.
Probably didn't need to be a public hearing.
It probably didn't, but since you announced it as one, it's probably.
Well, it was on the agenda.
It was on the agenda.
It has, we, what I said, I, I think, sort of was the sense of the board, and that's all you need, because there's no, there's no penalty for not voting it up or down.
Right. Great, okay. So we have several items for new business, but for the respect of the audience, I think we'll start with the A&R for 591 Blue Hill Avenue, which we continue, I think, will be continued tonight, or are we moving forward? Okay, so Sullivan, want to come forward?
Yes, I'm just here to, I'm sorry, my name's Paul Sullivan, here, 21 Smith Road, here on behalf of the A&R Plan at 591 Blue Hill Avenue. I recently had Board Appeals approve a special permit for 232,000 square foot lots, and also they granted variance regarding having access where your frontage is. And they had to modify the decision, so I thought I'd be very close now to the 20-day appeal period, but it got extended to the 27th of this month. So I'm asking the, the board to, to, to take this up at the hearing on the 24th, and if I need to extend the period of the 20 days, that's, I wanted to do that.
So moved.
Second.
Favor.
For change.
One minute, we have a discussion, sorry, 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 Mr. Park.
Since my name is permanently, right in the middle there, I have a problem that I won't be here on or around the 27th. I won't be here from the 23rd to the 1st.
When will you be here?
The 1st.
But that's, that's too. So we would have to endorse the plan ourselves, but that, and then we would have Tim hold it.
You can do that.
Or we could, why don't we do it that way?
Endorse it ourselves?
Endorse it ourselves, just because it does seem like quite a long time to endorse it, have it endorse it now and hold it. Especially since you have to date it. And also, have you made that change that I suggested about saying that the endorsement that the endorsement is pursuant to the variance?
I think it's been added to the plan. I don't have it with me yet.
All right, well...
I think we can endorse it ourselves. It's been a while since we endorsed an A&R ourselves.
And it was, yeah, it might be fun.
Yeah.
All right, Bill. How about that?
Fine.
So would you, do you endorse it at the meeting on the 24th?
The board will endorse it themselves.
And then, once the town clerk certifies that the appeal period has run, you can give Mr. Sullivan the plan.
Bring Sharkey.
Sure, that works.
All right.
Great.
Further discussion? All right, all in favor? Aye. All right, we'll see you on the 24th.
Thank you.
Thank you for being patient.
Did you want to set a time? I think we had...
Yes, we have one other. So what was the first one again?
Oh, it's actually, it's an A&R, right? We had Kin Sale at 7:15.
We don't, it's not public, right?
Yeah.
So it'll just be under old business.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, we'll just do it when we can fit it in.
I was thinking time before, I was thinking what it actually was.
Okay, I'm going to quickly move to an informal presentation on Hillside Ford Ranch Road, so that Ms. McCetrick can get out of here if she wants to.
Why are you going to stick around there?
We'd love to have you, yes.
Is there more?
Oh, yeah, we still have more stuff.
We have a few, we have a few other quick things after this.
Well, thank you for allowing me to come in on short notice. And I know you were very busy tonight, so it was an interesting meeting. I did bring the engineer, Jeff Kane, with me, but he did have to leave. But he had a chance to see the planning board, you know, in action. And he has not appeared before the planning board before Milton, so he wanted to meet you.
Hope he comes back.
He met you, you know, indirectly by watching your meetings. And he will be back. This is not a final plan, even though it looks like it, because it has all the pages. I suppose it's not really like a preliminary plan, but it's the same idea. The reason I'm here tonight is that I know that it's, you have crowded schedule on the 24th. And we would have had to file this anyway if we were trying to be placed there, but we couldn't have been. There's just no space. But we do anticipate that we will be planning, you know, profiling an application for the cluster development on Hillside Street soon. And we also know that we're running into issues of change and transition on the planning board. So the reason I'm in here tonight is to leave a plan with you, which will be in the planning board office. It is not a final plan, so, but it's available if anyone wants to look at it. Anyone from the public, that's just fine. There's no problem with any of that. I wanted the engineer to be here, because he hasn't done one of these in Milton. And I wanted to make sure, you know, what I want you to do in addition to looking at the substance of the plan and the details, is to look at all the technical plan requirements that you normally have. And make sure that we have the proper sheets and the proper details. We may not have everything on here right now. And just let me know, and I will communicate that to him. So, you know, there's an existing conditions plan, which you've gone through. What we're looking at right now is...
Ford Ranch Road's at the top of the property. Roadway in is on there, open land. Comes in from the northeast, drops down, and goes westerly. You've got 10 house lots. You've got two very big opened land spaces.
And down here.
There's another one down here, three. There's another one over here.
What we have is a little stream that falls towards, which is a culvert there, Sullivan? Do they cross a culvert under the road?
There will be a, there will be a stream crossing right in here.
There is a stream. We will be hearing for the Conservation Commission. It's an intermittent stream, we believe. But we, Conservation Commission often doesn't want to determine one way or the other. They may have to now, but...
So it was have to have a...
There will have to be a, well, there'll have to be a small bridge over the stream. I mean, it's going to be more than a culvert. And that's on the, all right, this is the...
This is the road, this is the stream crossing right here?
This is the stream crossing. In a later sheet, there are details for that crossing we'll cover. I think this is the plan.
When I met with Marian.
How many copies of these plans did you leave us?
We only have two of the big ones. I will get it electronically.
I have it electronically. I will give it to you, to Bill. And so if that's satisfactory, you can look at it online. But I can, I have two. If you would like both of them, I can leave them both here and have him give me another one.
No, I think that they can actually, the planning office can produce something bigger than eight and a half by 11.
Right. But not too big.
11 by 17, right. That would be perfect, I think.
Right.
Marian, can you, is the, I understand the driveway might be gated now?
There's a, the proposal is to have a gated entrance.
Okay.
I know, you know, not everybody likes gated entrances. But the idea is that this is definitely a private way. And that they really, that it, because of the proposal and the form of the roadway, they don't want people driving in here and just driving around who don't know the configuration of the road. And so that is the proposal, to have a gated entrance. We have an 18-foot pavement proposed here, still. I've, you know, had some discussions about that. And we have a turnaround here, which will be, is supposed to be an area where vehicles, public safety vehicles and everything, everybody can turn around. This, one of these plans, let me just, I don't know. This plan shows, probably is a little bit more informative, to show you what the lots are going to be like and what some of the constrictions are with these lots. It's still, we still have the 25-foot buffer line indicated here. All of these lots have septic systems. There's no sewer in this area. And all of the septic systems are, most of them are in the front of the lot. Sort of unusual. There's an area for the driveway to come in. But because of that, it's difficult to move anything in the area of the roadway, because there has to be enough room for the septic systems. And there, there, there's a restriction in the Cluster Zoning Bylaw as to how much lot you can cover. That's based on the overall acreage in the lot. And there will be a table in the final plans that will either recite the Bylaw 35% requirement, or I suppose it could actually list the coverage allowed for each lot. In addition to that, there are wetlands restrictions, so that nothing can happen within the 25-foot zone. And within the 100-foot zone, the Conservation Commission has an area of jurisdiction and will have, they will be reviewing anything that's done in that 100-foot zone. So they will be looking at trees, tree removal, tree replacement, and that kind of thing. That doesn't mean that the planning board shouldn't be interested in it. But on these lots, there's a lot of the lot that's going to be under the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission. Some of this lot, because there's wetlands and a stream here. Let's see. There are drainage areas. There are some rain gardens. You know, when the engineer was going to be here originally, I knew we wouldn't have much time, but he was the one who was going to explain that to you. I can certainly have him come back if you want to before we finalize the plan. But you should look carefully at how it's currently designed and think about the requirements as they exist, as they're referenced in that Bylaw. Let's see, what else do we have here? I guess, okay, we can just let it sit. So, in general, as a cluster zoning development, this follows the, this is consistent with the general intent of the Bylaw in the sense that it creates large undeveloped areas that will remain in there and will not, in fact, they won't be changed at all. There's no plan to put in pathways. There's no plan to put in any improvements. There are, there are some drainage areas, and there's a rain garden on the Ford Ranch Road lot. So to the extent that those areas will be created, that will be changed. But for the most part, the land around the exterior of this development, on the other side of that area, there are other houses on Harland Street. And some on the Hillside Street right-of-way is going to remain in the same condition it is right now. It was formerly pasture for Wentworth Farm. This area, the name of the developments Wentworth Farm, because this area was called Wentworth Farm starting around 1850 or perhaps earlier. And as far as we can tell, that's all it was in the back, was a pasture. Most of the trees are, they're not huge ancient trees. But it's now vegetated, because it hasn't been used as pasture, at least since the 1950s. There is, when you, most of these, a lot of these plans have two parts, because some of the land is off here, and it's around the edges of the right-of-way from Hillside Street. There's about, been about five years of discussion, applications, litigation, more discussion about how to develop this property. And the key issues have been that the immediate neighbors strongly did not want Hillside Street right-of-way used, even though Hillside Street right-of-way looks like the access, one of the ways that you could build a road into this area. And they much preferred that a new right-of-way be created off Ford Ranch Road. And that is a more expensive proposition. It's more complicated, because there are wetlands and there's a stream on the Ford Ranch Road lot. The other road was already there, and it was basically in an upland area. So in order to create a development, and so there have been proposals to create condominium complexes here. There's been a 40B proposal talked about. And the neighbors consistently asked for and pushed for a single-family development. So this configuration with the 10 lots is a result of that negotiation process. It's particularly within the last year, there have been many meetings. I haven't been at them. There've been meetings of neighbors with the developer. And then the developer with the owner, who is finally no longer owns the property and has sold to Hamilton Realty. But in order to come up with a proposal, the neighbors needed to feel that this was something that could fit in with the neighborhood. The current owner, the prior owner had to feel that he was going to realize sufficient return from this property that had been held for decades by his family, basically, as an investment. And the developer had to feel that it would work as a development. So this 10-lot plan, it was originally an 11-lot plan. That was what was discussed with the neighbors. And after doing further engineering work and looking at the way the lots could be laid out, Todd Hamilton has concluded that 10 lots will work better. It will give him, give, you know, it'll create a lower level of profit. But it will create larger lots and better lots. And in this neighborhood, the property does sell for a very robust price. And in order to attract the type of buyer that you would want, he feels the lot should be this size. They're, they vary in size. They're not, they're probably more similar to a B-zone lot. Some of them 25,000 feet, one of them 60,000 square feet. None of them are the size that you would have in the subdivision in this area. So a couple of features of the cluster zoning that we are going to be looking for relief or some modifications are, the open space is not, there, 30, we have not been able to place 35% of the open space in the open land. We have slightly over half of it is wetland. And, I mean, slightly over half is upland, and slightly under half is wetland. So in this cluster development, there's wetland in the open land. That would require modifications to the requirements. We also are not creating any public paths or walkways into the open land. That hasn't been looked for, particularly in the neighborhood discussions. Also, this neighborhood is surrounded by the Blue Hills Reservation on three sides. And nobody seemed to be particularly interested in having access to the, to the open land in this development. It's not unattractive, but it's woods and scrub. There's certainly wildlife in there. There definitely are deer. But there are probably rabbits and, you know, foxes and the sort of wildlife that you find up in the Blue Hills. And to the extent that those large areas can be left in their natural state, those habitats will be preserved. So there is some advantage to doing the cluster design from that perspective. There is, I won't show it to you, but when you look at the plans, you will see there's a preliminary plan in there that shows how many 60,000-square-foot lots you could create. And essentially makes each lot longer and spread out a little bit more, so there isn't any open land. The, I'm trying to think, what else? There are some other features of the requirements that we're still working on as to, you know, what we will propose, in terms of whether we will ask for modification. But in terms of the physical plan, the main divergence from the requirements of the Bylaw is the fact that there's wetland in, there's more wetland in the open land than you wrote into this Bylaw. The reason the roadway is the width it is, which is a minimum width, minimum paved width, is basically for two reasons. One is because the lot configuration is so tight, and the septic systems have to be where they are. But the other reason is that this is in the Hillside Street neighborhood, which is, you know, there are a lot of very expensive new homes up there. Also, a lot of older historic homes. There are old streets. There are newer streets. But a lot of the streets are narrow. There aren't any sidewalks. And this design seemed to be consistent with streets in that neighborhood. And we felt that it was adequate for this use, especially if it was going to be gated. And it certainly is going to continue to be a private road or a private way. I assume that, you know, most of you are familiar with Hillside, with the Hillside Street area. You know it has a neighborhood association. It's the oldest neighborhood association in Milton. It's very active, and they have played a large role in these negotiations. A lot of residents have individually come in and left, and come in and left as this issue of how to develop this area has been talked about. They've put an extraordinary amount of time into trying to resolve it. And as has Mr. Hamilton, his engineer. I've played a lesser role, frankly, in all of that. You know, I've represented this application when it went before you in a couple of applications. But it's the neighborhood that's worked out the approach that they would like to use. And this plan is a result of that discussion. So they will be appearing before you when we actually have our public hearing. The Neighborhood Association has written a letter supporting the 10-lot plan. Director Butters have, nearby Butters have signed statements saying that they support or will not oppose this application. The Board of Selectmen has written, or will be producing, a letter that says they support the application. It seems to be a good solution. I would be very, very happy to find, to find a solution to this site, which I've been looking at for a long time with everybody. And at this time, there seems to be a good feeling about it in the neighborhood, which is encouraging to me. So I hope that what you will do, first thing I need to know is when you think it might be possible to schedule a public hearing, because I have to work backwards from that date to make sure that I have all of the application material in on time. You have, it's not going to, the 24th is not possible. The next meeting is the 14th. I don't know what you have scheduled already for that meeting. That's the meeting I would be thinking of trying to have a hearing on this.
So I think, from an availability standpoint, in April, I think we're pretty available. I think my caution to you as an applicant is, as you noted, we're going to have a transition on the board. If you're looking for a five-member board that can vote on the application, the new board member would only be able to miss one hearing. So if we had a meeting on April 14th, we would, we would have to continue until after the election. And I'm not even, is that even the case?
Well, the next meeting is after the election.
Can they miss, if they miss the first one, if they're not a board member? Can they even participate? So I, I actually just misspoke. So the only way you'd be able to have the five-member board is if you waited until after the election.
I think we would have to refile our application. And you'd have to hold the hearing over again, if that happens.
If you wanted, only if you wanted all five members.
You would have to have a meeting on the 14th and then, say, the 21st to have two meetings.
Right.
Or you'd have to schedule a meeting that you don't have on your schedule.
The 28th is the change.
The 28th is, is the election?
28th is the one.
26th is the election.
So the question for, the question for this board is, do we think this can be accomplished in two meetings?
Just to note that the planning staff is going to have to have time to, need time to review the plan and make sure that it meets all the requirements before the public hearing is scheduled. So that needs to be worked in as well.
Yes. And they told me minimum two days, minimum.
Two days, wow.
Two days, wow. Well, that's what they told me.
Across and the eyes are dotted, it might be possible.
Mary, do you consider these documents to be ready for us to comment on?
These are ready, in our view, there are a few little things here, but there's a note, I, I told you that the, there needs to be a note that says what the maximum allowable area is, that's a restriction that will be on any permit, that the lots can't be, have a footprint of more than 35% of the lot. That, you know, there, there are things like that, there are some notes, there may be more. These are plans that are complete from the engineer's standpoint, he thinks. That's why I'm giving them to you now. I would like you to look at them carefully, and look at them, I guess, as if they might be final plans, and tell me what else I need.
That's what we're asking Tim to do, essentially.
Yeah.
I do have a couple of comments.
Okay.
Yep, I just want, yeah, I mean, let's go into the comments and then we'll have to make a decision about, you'll have to make a decision as far as when you want to apply. We have, I think we, to answer your question, I think we have capacity in April. I think we actually, at this point, probably have capacity at the March 24th hearing, based on the decisions tonight, but I don't know if you can get your plans in in time.
Too late, it's too late, we can't get the ad, the ad would have to have been in Tuesday.
Right, okay, you're right, you're right, you're absolutely right, okay.
My question has to do with the fence, or the gate. Have the Ford Ranch Road residents been apprised of it? Because what's the mechanism, they're going to have to stop and open the gate, and will it impact traffic and public safety for kids biking and walking and waiting for the school bus, et cetera? Because it's a private road, the kids are going to have to come down to Ford Ranch Road to get the school bus, right? So, I, and then, you know, is there any concern, you know, with the fire department on having that, or the fact that you're going to have to have a stop in the street to open the gate? And you have 10.
So you have more information about that.
Just whether it's been vetted with the Ford Ranch Road residents and with public safety.
These things have a pedestrian can walk around it, they don't.
I just kind of enjoy this.
It's not on the drive, so we have to show the gate on the drive.
But it's more about the practicality of opening the gate when you have 10, I'm talking about a vehicle. So you have 10 homes here and you potentially have two cars per home, you have 20 vehicles potentially at 5 o'clock, and what does that mean for Ford Ranch Road and the people who are out there, waiting, you know, waiting for the gate to come open and close?
Okay.
And then the fact that they're, they're going to have to be waiting there at the same place, potentially, the kids are, you know, going to go wait to catch the school bus, so that...
That's the same thing we have with 333 Brush Hill, which is 20, 21.
You don't have a gate, though?
Yes, we do.
Yes, we do.
That's the.
Brushwood Estate.
Oh, okay, that's different.
But I, I understand that the planning board would like more information about how the gate would work, whether it might create backups.
Where it's located specifically.
It needs to be shown on the plan, and...
Further the setback, by the sounds of things, the better.
I did, I did have a request, and it's not on the plan now, to show an area where students could stand and wait for a bus at the entrance, which would just be a gravel area, and I have asked to have that added.
To Cheryl's point, the further back it could go, the better. You know, just on the gate issue, I actually am a, in favor of the gate in this particular application because of the roadway width.
I just think we need to make sure that it's not interrupting other people on Ford Ranch Road.
I think it's a great, I think it's a great point, so it's something we need to look at.
Sure. And, you know, my concern about the pedestrians and the bicyclists has to do with the width of the road and no sidewalks, and, you know, that they're going to potentially be coming out here, so, I mean, I do think with the traffic concerns in town, the pedestrian concerns, I've seen it in emails and, and I've seen it posted, the Milton Neighbors Facebook group is 4,000 people, there's a lot of posts about things like this in Milton, about safety, et cetera. And, and of course, the tragedy yesterday, I mean, I think we, we have to be very mindful of, of what we're doing with, and the impact on safety out here, that's all. I'm not suggesting that this roadway width has to change, but I do want to make sure that this is fully vetted at the intersection.
I, I think you're right, I mean, these, I just heard the gate idea and then it was just gate, I mean, I, I have no idea how such a, I know that there should be a system where you, you know, you can open it from your car, but is it going to open and close and open and close and open and close when the stream of traffic is going through, I'm not sure.
And then my other request that they have to do with the stormwater and the rain garden, which I'm glad to see, and we talked about that, Marion offline at one time, but I just wanted to see, are we going to plan to have the town engineer look at the drain, the drainage plans, and do we have adequate time to get that done? So just to think through that.
Well, usually, yeah, usually when I have an application for various things, I mean, I, you know, I, I would generally take it, or the engineer takes it to the town engineer for a review, because the planning board usually asks that question. And I don't know to what extent it's been reviewed yet, but since these, these plans are at this point, I think you could begin to do that, and that might help with the time constraints. It can be a problem with the engineering department because they have a lot of other work to do.
You've been putting this out here.
I think we'll go to a peer review here.
I think getting that started as quickly as possible makes sense.
And then, because also some of the other subdivision plans have been indicating that they're going to take care of their runoff from the roof in, onsite in separate structures, and I don't see anything like that on here, so I'm.
Well, I, I saw, you know, this, there are, there is a house outline shown on these lots.
Right.
That is not necessarily the exact location, because this, this, these houses are not going to be built by a developer.
Right, sure.
They're going to be, the lots will be sold and the new owner will have to build a house, but they're going to want to know a lot of things before they buy the lot.
Strategy of how it's going to be done.
So, the question is, what if any, I heard that in, in the, the previous preliminary plan, I, I noticed that and I took a little note about it.
Yeah, and the Pleasant Street one also, if you wanted, if you wanted to look at what they were doing and what they showed there. I'm just trying to give all the things that we can think of that are going to need to be addressed.
Yeah, how does the engineer anticipate that drainage from houses would be handled? What, what sort of system?
Stormwater, right.
And, what's the Pleasance?
Pleasant Street was just.
Oh, the development on Pleasant Street.
The development on Pleasant, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And construction management to the various permits we've done recently, tree preservation, construction management, the one we did up for the St. Pius, that'd be a good special permit to look at from those perspectives, to see what we required.
Preserve any trees?
Quite a few, actually.
Yeah, they did, as a matter of fact, they had a tree preservation plan.
So it's cleared, though.
I think a lot of people don't realize the, the buffer around that area that was in that was not cleared, or was not, was not supposed to be cleared, I haven't been up to it or one. Yeah, I don't think so.
The buffer is extensive.
Yeah.
Okay, so how do you do something like that in a development like this, where you're not, you're not building the houses as part of the initial?
Probably focus on the roadway.
But according to the engineer, a lot of it does have to be decided now, the conservation commission will have, the permit should have conditions applying to the individual lots, that the lot owners will know that they have to.
Pleasant Street homes aren't designed either, so if you look at Pleasant Street, they have a pre, they have a preservation plan, tree preservation plan put in place, and they have allowable areas to build the houses within.
I was going to say, you want to probably set up the building envelope.
You just set the building envelope area.
Right, or you have it, huh?
And then the tree, the trees are outside of it.
Well, normally when I have someone show a building envelope, building envelope is the area inside the 25-foot buffer, and whatever the required distance is, if there is one from something like the septic system, that may be.
Doesn't, doesn't have to be though.
This isn't, this isn't the building envelope, it would be bigger than that.
Yes.
But what are the, what are the definit, what's the definition?
Just where you're going to put the house, a big enough area that you can slap a house in without, without, you know, going to...
Look at 33, look at, not 33, look at the Pleasant Street plans, they show the envelopes, it's basically just squares.
And the St. Pius property had the, they, we call them the building pods, if you remember.
Yes, we do, yep, you're right.
Rather than building envelopes, so that's a good one.
And so how do you show a dotted line?
Yep.
Yeah?
Okay.
In the...
And how do you address setbacks in a, in a development like this that is obviously not the lot size that you're normal?
You don't have to worry about them because there's no requirement.
I know, so what do you do for the building envelope? Stand or, I mean, I think he has 20 feet or something.
Your, your building pods are going to be setback, you're going to determine, I mean, the septic system is going to require.
Yes.
A setback, and then...
And the wetlands will require a setback.
If you know, on the, along Ford Ranch Road, you're going to want to make sure that you don't put them right up on the lot line, so...
Which you're not, I mean, if he's suggesting where they'll go, they're not there.
And the requirement for the open space area will also create its own setback at that point, too, because you can't build within the open space area.
Okay, so I, I'm going to be asking him, we've talked about this, but we weren't exactly sure, you know, how to, I wasn't sure what to tell him he should do.
Do something that's practical, something that you think is going to give you flexibility to put the house on the lot, but...
Not have to come back here.
Yes, exactly.
But, but still have, have it pretty clear where the house is going to go.
Yeah, okay.
Mary, based on the roadway width, I'd, I'd like to see a turning template for a truck, the engineer should be able to put that right on, just, just on the corner and then on the roundabout as well.
Could you do 20 feet?
They keep telling me no, and I mean, you know, I'm just telling you what I get back. I know everybody thought it would be easier if it could be 20 feet or 22 feet, and so far, they don't want to do it. They don't want to reduce the area of the lots any more than they have, and the septic systems in some cases are very close. And there is, there is a setback that you have to have of a septic system from the edge of the lot. So, those are the, that's clustered, so we're all near, that, that is an upland area and that's...
I'm looking at these footprints, though.
Emily first.
So far, no. But I still ask about it.
Emily?
Where are you with open space as a percentage of the total?
We have 36% of open land.
You have that to 36, okay.
Yes, but we don't have the right proportion of...
Understood that, I just wanted to know the total, yeah.
Cheryl?
Well, I was just looking at this sheet six, and it seems, seems to me that, you know, two feet additional on each side is doable, if these lot, if these house footprints are accurate, looks like you're going to have enough room. It's like the only one that, Lot 9, where the buffer comes in, might get a little tight, but...
Well, it's pretty tight, all right, I mean, because right now the house configuration is right against it.
But, I mean, you could bring your drive-in from the other side, too.
Carve it around.
Yeah. And, you know, the way, obviously this is just an engineer's little bit of a diagram, but you ideally wouldn't want your driveways opposite one another, like between Lots 3 and 9, just, so, I mean, that's not a creative, let's just say, it's just a diagram, but...
Oh, you mean like this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that's where having the buildable area delineated will help, so, because again, there's enough restrictions on these sites to be able to figure that out.
But I do think, I do think if they look at this a little bit more carefully, it would be helpful, because I think in the future, somebody's going to look at this and say, okay, this is what they approved, so I'm going to come in and I'm going to do these three driveways like this, and that won't be ideal.
Right.
Well, when you approve a plan like this that shows driveways, does it require that they be located as shown, as long as you show, what you want is a footprint?
It's a special permit, I mean, if the driveway is shown, the driveway goes where it's shown.
That's what I think.
Then I think you got to look at it again, because I don't think this is a good driveway arrangement, to have the three driveways together, Lots 3, 2, and 9.
Are you taking a note of this?
I am, but I'm not, yeah.
Lots 3, 2.
And 9.
And 9, there's a suggestion that the driveway configuration is not...
Ideal.
And, and it's not ideal because you don't like to look into someone else's driveway?
Well, you've got two driveways between the lots, the driveways between Lots 2 and 3 are right next to one another, and then Lot 9 is right across from it, so you have the cars coming out of three driveways facing each other.
Okay, so it's a track.
On a very narrow road.
It's a very narrow street.
On a very narrow, yeah.
With the, with the flow of traffic in and out of the driveway.
And even just for aesthetics, because of the...
The narrower streets, the more...
I mean, the fact that you have the three coming out to a narrow street, and I think, if you think about kids on bikes and, I mean...
I don't like common driveways personally, I really don't. I think they create a lot of problems in the future that involve the Board of Appeals and other places.
But if you, if you...
You speak from experience.
You're right, you would think, you would, you would think that way here, but I would say that it would be best to avoid a common.
I'm not buying that.
Not having them next to each other or directly across from each other.
Yeah, and I think, Marion, looking at all of these, I, I would suggest that you not have the engineer lay out the driveways, but you have a landscape architect or an architect lay out the driveways and the footprints, because if you're going to have to live with this, this wouldn't be what I would suggest you do.
Well, we will have to live with it, because it is a special permit, and what's on the plan determines what you can do, so...
I would definitely have somebody else give that a look over besides an engineer.
Okay, anything else?
I, I, you know, if he'd been here, I'm sure he would say he also would be willing to look at it, and...
No, no insults intended to him, but there's a different sensibility that would come from the other design professionals.
And if the engineer were here, he'd probably say, no problem.
Anything else for Marion?
As long as there's space to do it, I mean, I, I don't know why there would be a particularly strong feeling about it, you know, if that's what you think is better, I think they're most likely going to do it.
But if we need to see him next time.
He could do that, if you can have, make time to do that, that would be good.
Maybe we should, maybe we should, maybe we should do that again, have the engineer come in.
We have room on the 24th now, right, Tim? We can't, we, we don't have any...
I missed the first half of this meeting.
We don't have any zoning discussions.
There's a lot of room on the 24th.
So if you'd like to come back on the 24th for continuation of this.
I thought we were having zoning every meeting.
With an engineer.
With the engineer.
A landscape architect.
We'll get to you a bit earlier next time.
So, do you, would you want Bill and myself to, to take a crack at this?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Because I think it would be helpful for them on the 24th to hear whether or not they're complete.
Yeah, and you can certainly contact me anytime, saying, oh, you know, I noticed this is missing, you know, I'd like to know that so that we can work on it.
Have we done a cluster before?
Not under the new bylaw, I don't think.
Not under the new, never under the old bylaw and not under the new bylaw. You're the first.
You're excited now, I can tell.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, I appreciate it, I appreciate the feedback.
All right, very quickly, board, first of all, we have an application, or a, we have something we need to sign, right, Tim?
Site plan approval.
Site plan approval, so, do you want to circulate that now while we...
Did you, did you give out the...
You've got the blue pen, Mary.
You all should have a copy, I distributed this the other day.
I have a blue pen, yes. You don't want the purple?
Yes, I don't mind the purple.
Oh, there it is.
I got from an editing perspective, or to...
I don't know if it's the right one, it was the one that was sitting here, maybe it's not the right one.
What are we signing?
It was the one in the package.
591.
Which has a, which has a little...
Yeah, so I put, I put the applicant's name and address at the top, and I added a paragraph four, just saying nothing in this approval should be considered.
How many copies do you want?
I think everyone has a copy, so...
How many copies do you want signed?
Okay, I think mine got mixed up with some others, so I'll sign other people's copies.
Okay, so here.
I have a blue pen, I have a blue pen.
Oh, no, I've got one, I've got one.
All right, we've got Emily, Cheryl, and Alex circulating, we'll have three copies.
Alex, which line, which number line are you signing? No, the, the line?
I signed line 2 for some reason.
You signed line, okay, so I'm going to sign line 5, actually, that'll make it easy.
Just quickly, on other new business, we can defer a lot of this to the next meeting, but I just want to...
Is that line 91?
We only have one item left for new business, I can't...
He's fine 91, but that's the only one.
Or did he sign, I'm signing above you, right?
Yeah, you're signing above me, I'm going to, Mike signs 3, we're good.
Do you want to just...
Sorry, go ahead.
Only other item that we can, that we don't have to, that we can defer everything else, MBTA, Matta Plan, Trolley Plans. Cheryl, do we need to talk about that tonight?
I just want to give an overview and then maybe we can continue with the discussion the next meeting. I wanted to bring it up because, sorry, I'll need it for one more, though, right? Yeah. You know, the, there's been a lot of discussion about whether the MBTA is going to make modifications to the trolley service, and I think as a planning board and as a town that it's an important transportation option, which I think if it, it doesn't continue or if it changes in a way that such that people don't use it as much, it could have traffic implications on town, and it could also have desire, property desirability or livability implications for the town. So, I would like for the planning board to consider making some kind of a resolution or whatever it is that we send off to our elected officials to say that we believe that, that we should be paying close attention, that our elected officials, the Board of